Okay, I'm going to call to order this regular city commission meeting of Monday, October 20th. All please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As always, we begin by acknowledging the land on which we gather is the territory of the Ottawa and Chipewa peoples who have stored this land through the generations. Thank you for your strength and resilience in protecting this land, inspiring us to uphold our responsibilities to do the same. And with that, I will go ahead and get us started with roll call, please.
That's me. Commissioner Werner?
Here.
Commissioner Shaw?
Here.
Commissioner Anderson?
Here.
Mayor?
Here. Okay. And I just wanted to, at the top here, do a quick announcement. We have two commissioners, hopefully not three. It's Mr. Tredwell also. He sometimes arrives a little late. But Commissioner Wilson and Stanley, this would have been their last meeting. We wanted, I wanted to take a moment and just acknowledge their, and thank them for their four years of service. Being a city commissioner is a very strenuous job, even though the pay does not always match it. They are working people from our community, and I have always appreciated their input. They, I think, represent with the rest of this body what we all can be in a blend of different backgrounds, different experiences, and different lifestyles. And so I just wanted to take a moment and thank them. As I said, it's, it's a sometimes, I won't say it's a thankless job. Many of you are very good about thanking us for it, and we appreciate that. But it's a duty that they up took or decided to take up, and especially in a time when we really needed it. Back in 2021, we were still in the kind of throes of COVID, and the field was hesitant, people were hesitant to step in the field at that time, and they stood up and they decided to serve their community. And I really wanted to take a moment and thank them before we began this meeting. They are working folks who work not just up here on the commission, but both of them have jobs that also work with, for the betterment of the community and their day-to-day lives. And I know that's what they're out working on, both of them now at two different respective places. And I know they would have liked to have been here to, to say goodbye properly to everyone, but I wanted to acknowledge their service and thank them for their time. So with that, I will move on to announcements from the interim city manager.
Yes. Thank you. I have announcements for this week, the week of October 20th, 2025. Fall Loose Leaf Pickup began today, Monday, October 20th, in city neighborhoods, and as always, starts on the west side of the city and moves eastward over five to seven weekdays. And crews will then return to the west side and make additional sweeps as they can to repeat that process. And you can find more information on Loose Leaf Pickup at the city's website, which is traverscitymi.gov. And also, as we're talking about weather-related things, that one about fall, thinking about winter, as we prepare for the upcoming ski season at Hickory Hills, and our need to address staffing vacancies, we formed a Hickory Hills Transition Team made up of a number of stakeholder groups or groups that help make Hickory work, as well as employees. And I want to thank representatives from Preserve Hickory, the Grand Traverse Ski Club, Vasa Ski Club, and Ski Patrol for their help. I also want to make a plug that we're recruiting for a number of paid seasonal positions that help make Hickory happen. And you can find those opportunities on the city website under the job section. And so that's an opportunity to help really make some of the magic work at Hickory. And I want to encourage folks to check out those opportunities and share them with your networks. And then the city's contractor for annual maintenance at the wastewater treatment plant has begun their, or will begin, has begun their work, and that'll go through October 24th. That work includes cleaning and inspections of different basins that are essential to safe operations, and residents may notice some additional odor, but it will be temporary. And we appreciate folks' patience as we complete that important maintenance work. And then beginning on October 22nd, in preparation for the solar panel project, a new roof is being installed on the Hall Park Boathouse. That'll result in a temporary closure of a portion of the Boardman Lake Loop near Hall Park. And there is detour signage directing users to the Eighth, to Eighth Street. That'll be in place. And the roof installation is anticipated to be completed on October 28th, so that's just about a week project. And then the traffic control order for a two-way state street is set to expire on December 31st. The DDA is currently gathering feedback from downtown businesses, and I've also asked for folks to provide any feedback to me, and I appreciate that. The city's design team is going to prepare some pros and cons and present those to me, and I expect that we'll have some discussion on this topic in December at a future city commission meeting. And again, comments and suggestions are welcome with the DDA by emailing info@downtowntc.com. You can also feel free to email me. And then a reminder, just to ensure consistency regarding office hours for all city departments that are housed in the governmental center, the adjusted hours are now Monday through Thursday from 8:00 a.m. to 4:30 p.m., and Fridays from 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. And customer needs outside those hours can be accommodated by appointments. And lastly, the city is teaming up with Grand Travers County to host the annual Halloween open house. That's on Thursday, October 30th, here at the governmental center from 3:00 p.m. to 5:00 p.m. And I encourage folks to come and check out the cute costumes. So that's all that I've got. Thank you.
The only thing I would add to that is, are we seeing our annual competition, gourd competition in the office as well? That's always a fun one to check out.
Yes, gourd-a-ween. Do you know the specifics on that, Sarah?
Um, it's a competition between city departments and county departments. We create gourd diagrammas, and there's voting, so please vote for your best.
They are, they are always very, very impressive. They're out during the trick-or-treat as well. That's why I thought of it, but they're very.
They play on words like security gourds.
The Gordon girls.
The secret gourd. Yes. Gordon, 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 Gordon girls and all that jazz.
They've, they've done really good ones in the past, so I highly encourage people.
Got to get our creative juices going.
That's right. Worth just checking out, even if you don't have a bill to pay or a question for the clerk's office.
Yep.
All right. And with that, we'll go to you, Sarah, for any updates from the interim city clerk.
Sure. Meetings scheduled for this week are the Arts Commission rescheduled meeting will take place this Wednesday, October 22nd, at 3:30 in the committee room. Hickory Hills Advisory Committee will, meeting will take place this Thursday, October 23rd, at 9:00 a.m. at the Hickory Hills Lodge. And then a couple of voting announcements, not gourd-related. Early voting at the governmental center for city voters will begin this Saturday and run through Sunday, November 2nd. The hours are 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. During early voting, registered city voters can vote in person, and if they've received an absentee ballot, they can also process it through the tabulator during that time if they would like. The clerk's office will host Saturday office hours for election purposes only on Saturday, November 1st, from 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. And since this is our last meeting before the election, a reminder that the election will officially take place on Tuesday, November 4th. Polls will be open 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. An absentee ballot should be returned by 8:00 p.m. on Election Day. And lastly, I would like to thank the clerk's staff and the many members of our community, your neighbors and friends, that serve as election inspectors during early voting and Election Day.
Thank you very much for that. And we've got a couple proclamations today, so in order, just so everyone knows when to come up, we're going to do the Family Court Awareness Month, and then we'll do the Check Your Cherries. So if you, if I can have, from Family Court, meet me up at the podium, please. I'm going to read this. Yes. All right, we've got another two pager here. Hold on. Okay. City of Traverse City proclaims Family Court Awareness Month, November 2025. Whereas the purpose of Family Court Awareness Month is to increase awareness of the importance of a family court system that prioritizes child safety, recognizes the unique circumstances and need of each child and family unit, and makes decisions based on the best interests of each child. And whereas it is recognized that the family court system handles more than 50% of all circuit court cases filed in Michigan, as such is a need, there is a need for a court system that values continuity, permanency, and stability for each child, and recognizes the need for a dedicated family court with judges and court professionals who prioritize the needs of the families and children of the state. And whereas, we recognize that families have multiple needs in multiple, excuse me, multiple cases to address those needs. There is a need to ensure that each family has a judge who provides consistency and understands the family's dynamics assigned to all those cases involving the family. And whereas, we recognize the impacts of domestic abuse and how it presents within the family court system. And whereas, we recognize the importance of specialized education and training for judges and professionals working within the family court system in the areas of domestic abuse, childhood trauma, substance abuse, mental health, and service ability. And whereas, we also educate judges and other family court professionals on the proper application of existing laws regarding families and children to ensure that the children's best interests are considered in every decision made by the family court. And whereas, we must further educate judges and other family court professionals on empirical data and evidence-based, peer-reviewed research currently available. Such research is a critical component to educating the decision-makers regarding the best interests of a child. And whereas, during Family Court Awareness Month, the state of Michigan seeks to educate the public and to continue to improve the family court system. Therefore, be it resolved, I, Amy Shamro, mayor of City of Traverse City, do hereby proclaim November 2025 as Family Court Awareness Month in Traverse City, Michigan. And Amanda, I'm going to go ahead and let you speak a little to this. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Amanda Newton, and I am a member of Protective Parents Michigan. I would like to thank Traverse City for acknowledging that child safety should be the priority in family court custody decisions. One in three Michigan families are directly impacted by domestic violence, but abuse also affects each one of us in our communities. Without proper training for family courts on domestic violence, children continue to be exposed to abuse, and families need more social support, putting extra strain on local services like shelters, counseling, and child protective services. Post-separation abuse in family court puts children in harm's way because abusive parents are more likely to seek sole custody and are successful 70% of the time. Tragically, abuse is often not understood or believed by family court, and many children are ordered into unsupervised contact with abusive parents. I want to share some statistics so you can see why family court reform is needed. 60% of perpetrators who have abused their spouse will abuse their children. Adverse childhood experiences such as abuse negatively impact a child's development, their relationships, and their mental and physical health. Most child abuse is perpetrated in the family by a parent. Children are three times as likely to be shot at home than in a mass school shooting. And one child dies every six days amid custody fights in family court cases. Since 2008, 39 Michigan children have been murdered during divorce or custody battles. One of these children was Rowan Morley Poles of Caledonia, Michigan, who is not returned to his mother at the end of his father's parenting time, and was later found to be a victim of a murder-suicide. Rowan's mom had been unable to have a judge issue an Amber Alert despite appealing to police and the family court judge. A new law that has passed in the Michigan House and is being considered by the Senate is Rowan's Act. This would allow state police to issue an Amber Alert more quickly when a child is considered to be in danger. We are also trying to establish Cadence Law in Michigan to prevent future tragedies. Cadence Law is focusing on prioritizing child protection over parent rights. This law was named for Kayden Mansuko, a seven-year-old girl murdered by her father during court-ordered unsupervised parenting time after the court ignored the father's history of abuse. Cadence Law would require training for judges about all types of abuse, and judges would need to consider a past history of domestic violence when making custody decisions. Our children's lives are literally dependent on the court becoming educated about these issues. Thank you for proclaiming November as Family Court Awareness Month in Traverse City. If you would like to support Cadence Law, please contact your state representative and the Family and Veterans Committee member in the Michigan House of Representatives. To support Rowan's Act, please contact your state senator. If you or someone you know is struggling to protect their child in family court, please connect with Protective Parents Michigan Facebook Support Group and the rowanproject.org website. Thank you.
And just a reminder for everyone, if you want to reach out about the House bills, our House representatives for Traverse City are Betsy Kofia and John Roth, and our state senator is John DeMose for the Rowan's Law. So definitely, thank you for that, Amanda, for raising that awareness. So now we are going to bring up, if you want to join us, Michelle and Gia. Thank you. We are proclaiming the second Saturday in October as the annual Check Your Cherries Day in honor of Holly T. Bird. So whereas Holly T. Bird is a beloved member of our community, whose spirit, advocacy, and kindness have inspired neighbors to look out for one another, prioritize wellness, and approach challenges with courage and humor. And whereas October is nationally recognized as Breast Cancer Awareness Month, a time to elevate education, prevention, early detection, and support for individuals and families affected by breast cancer. And whereas early detection through regular self-awareness and clinical, I think that was supposed to be self-checks, but, and clinical recommended screening significantly improves outcomes, saves lives, and reduces the physical, emotional, and financial burdens of cancer on our residents. And whereas the phrase "Check Your Cherries" is a memorable, community-friendly call to action that encourages people to learn what's normal for their bodies, perform regular self-checks, and speak with their health providers about appropriate screening. And whereas the City of Traverse City wishes to honor all community members whose journeys have galvanized public awareness, mutual aid, and compassion, therefore be it resolved, I, Amy Shamro, mayor of the City of Traverse City, do hereby recognize the second Saturday in October as honoring of Holly T. Bird as an annual Check Your Cherries Day in Traverse City, Michigan. And I wanted to invite Gia up to speak. I know that she and her family have been doing a lot of research on the high rates of incidence of breast cancer in this community as well, that unfortunately also took Holly. So please, we're, please join us for some comments.
Thank you. My name is Giovanna Kachell. I'm honored to be here today to speak in strong support of the resolution before you, one that designates the second Saturday in October as Check Your Cherries Day in Grand Travers County. More than a piece of policy, this resolution is a reflection of what we stand for as a community: compassion, prevention, and collective care. It also honors the legacy of my aunt Holly Baugh T. Bird, whose courage and advocacy inspired so many of us to face life's hardest challenges, including breast cancer, with strength, humor, and hope. Holly Baugh taught us that caring for one another isn't just an act of kindness, it's a responsibility. Check Your Cherries carries the same spirit. It's an approachable and memorable way to remind us all, especially women, to know our bodies, check regularly for changes, and to seek medical guidance early. These small steps, when taken consistently, can and do save lives. This resolution opens a door to a bigger and more urgent conversation. In Grand Travers County, women under 50 are being diagnosed with breast cancer at higher-than-average rates. That's more than a statistic, it's a warning sign. Daughters, sisters, wives, and mothers are in the prime of their lives facing shocking diagnoses. This means that early detection matters here more than ever, and it means we need to ask why. Passing this resolution is an important first step, but it can't be the last. I urge this commission alongside community leaders, healthcare professionals, and research institutions to commit to supporting deeper research into breast cancer trends in our region. This resolution sends a clear message that Traverse City is ready to lead, to protect the health of our community, and to honor Holly Baugh's legacy, not just with words, but with action. So today I'm asking you to vote yes to empowering residents with the tools and knowledge to protect their health, say yes to awareness and prevention, and yes to a healthier future for us all. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Gia. Thank you, Mayor Shamro, for the proclamation. My name is Michelle Bostic. I'd like to make a few remarks to the city commission as well in light of this proclamation and public comments on what this means to me and what Sarah and Holly's family and I, her Holly sisters, hope to do with this, with this proclamation, what we hope to bring to the community with the Check Your Cherries Day next October. The party planning phase is underway now that we have this proclamation and a resolution from the county. But I want to share a little bit about myself and how I came to be here and working with Holly Baugh's sisters on this effort. And I can't really explain to you what Holly meant to me without telling you about my friend Christina. So I met her many years ago when I was working at the Grand Travers Band. And at the time, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem was but a humble councilman. And he came in my office one Friday afternoon to waste my time. And while we were talking, I said to him, hey, I'm getting dinner with your cousin this weekend. And he said, which one? And I said, Christina from HR. And he got this look on his face, and he got kind of serious. And he said, well, I don't remember what he said exactly, but it was something along the lines of, may God have mercy on all of our souls. Because this woman and I got on like a house fire. Sometimes in your life, you just find a person who is your person, who you don't have to explain things to, you get along, you're the same kind of weird. When things got rough for her, it was no time out of my day and no problem at all to support her through her rough patches. And she did the same for me. And her roughest patch came in 2022, and at the age of 34, she was diagnosed with triple-negative breast cancer. It was stage three at the time that they found it. When I, when we found that out, we started doing research. We were going to get the numbers, we were going to get the data, we were going to, if we knew what to expect, then we were going to beat it. It was going to be no problem. This was going to be a blip in her plans to finish her degree from Harvard University, a blip in her plans to go to law school, and a blip in her plans for me to eventually nominate her, to swear her in to the Michigan bar, which I was very much looking forward to do, and I had no doubt at all that she was going to be there someday and join me in the bar. When she became ill, while we were looking for data, she couldn't find answers, because answers are really hard to find when you have cancer. Your question is, what is this going to feel like? When it's breast cancer, you have questions, what am I going to look like? Especially the younger a patient is, the scarier the diagnosis is. She wasn't really finding the, excuse me, she wasn't really finding the answers that she wanted. So she took to social media, and she made her own TikTok page to document her journey through having cancer. She specifically wanted to bring an indigenous perspective to things like hair loss, to things like using plant-based medicines. The docetaxil is a derivative from the yew tree. She wanted to bring that to people so that when the next woman was diagnosed with this, they would have some of the information that she was looking for. And it was that kind of spirit that Christina had in her that made her friends with Holly Baugh, actually. If you remember, when the latter was first taken to the Traverse City School Board, and one of her first projects was to really advocate for tribal students to be able to wear beaded caps. While she was doing that, Christina was in the corner furiously beating graduation caps as fast as she could. She was a beater. I'm wearing her arc today. It's a part of her that I still carry with me. And while she got sick, I signed up. Man, I was there. I went to her surgical appointments with her. I went to every chemotherapy infusion that she had from July to December. I was there with food, I was there with coffee. And when you go get chemo, right, the patient's in the big chemo chair, and there's these little chairs on the side, and I was there. I wanted to be there when she woke up. I wanted to, her to know that she was not alone while she was going through something that I could not fathom at the time. She died in 2023 after we found, about six weeks after we found a brain metastasis, which led me to strongly suspect it wasn't stage three at the time of her diagnosis. She was, she was so like a sister to me. It was devastating. And she told me at the end, she said, I can't, I can't ask my mother to do this. Will you please do what you need to do, sign the paperwork? And so I did. I put her in hospice, and I signed her DNR. And she passed away very shortly after she went into hospice. I was devastated. I'm still devastated. And my friend Holly called me up, and I, she was one of the first people I saw after the, after the shock wore off. She picked me up, she put me back on my feet, she tried to help dry my tears, and she said, let's do the zombie run. Christina loved that. And I said, I don't really run. So we went to see Rocky Horror Picture Show instead. She checked in on me. It was, it was really similar, actually. The energy was really kind of the same. She checked in on me periodically. She was, it was with Holly probably the first time I laughed, after Christina entered her final illness and died. That kind of thing, right? She was a, she was a friend who checked in on you. She was a friend to provide support. She was a friend to make sure that others around her were cared for. And she reached out to me again when she heard that I had been diagnosed with breast cancer one year after Christina's death. I was 41 years old at the time. It was my second-ever mammogram, and I was diagnosed with stage-two breast cancer. It wasn't triple-negative, but it was her two-positive hormone-negative, which is secondly aggressive to the dreaded triple-negative. I knew from my research, right, all the research that I started when Christina was diagnosed, I, I knew that my results indicated that I had cancer. And I, like many others, like Christina before me, was terrified of what my journey was going to look like. What will this feel like? What will this be like? I had a pretty good idea from watching somebody go through chemotherapy. And I strapped up, and I went, and it was my turn to sit in the big chemotherapy chair and look at that little chair in the room with me, that empty chair that Christina never sat in, because she was already gone from this. And that weighed very heavily on me. And when I got to the end of the chemotherapy, after my very last treatment, I was in bad shape. I'd been in the hospital, I needed a blood transfusion. I couldn't finish my last dose of chemotherapy. The oncologist said, your body can't take it anymore, so we're going to have to end it early. That scared me. Finishing scared me. The whole thing's awful, if anybody knows what I'm talking about. And while I was recovering from what turned out to be my final dose of chemo, Holly called me. And I asked the county commission when we presented the resolution, I'll ask the city commission as well, and just people who are listening, what are the odds? What are the odds that all three of us, in the space of three years, were each diagnosed? Christina and I were both under 50. Holly was still young for a breast cancer diagnosis, especially one that was so strong and so late in the game. What are the odds that all three of us, in a small social circle, were diagnosed with breast cancer in that shorter period of time? And what are the odds that they are both gone, and I am here? Those are, those are not great numbers. But at any rate, after I spoke with Holly, I knew enough still to know what, what was going, going to happen next. I knew. And I, she, she said to me, well, she said a lot of things, but one of the things she said was, cancer messed with the wrong women. Like you and me, we're gonna, we're gonna figure this out. And I, I knew. I, I knew that I would carry something forward for her as best I could. And so I, so I'm trying to do that. I'm endeavoring to do that. And I went, I shouldn't have done it, but I went, and I looked back at Christina's TikTok because of how, it's been, I can't, I can't look at it much. I haven't looked at it often. And on one of her last posts was one comment, and it was a heart, and it said, I miss you, and it was from her friend Holly. And they were friends, and they respected each other, and they worked together well. They're both gone, and the best that we can do as a community is try to carry their memories forward, and try to carry forward what was important to them, and try to look out for each other. And that's what her sisters and I are trying to do with bringing this information forward, is to look out for our friends and for our neighbors. And to say, there is real recent data. It's been characterized as 10-year-old data in the news. It is not. The period between 2016 and 2021, CDC's data showed Grand Travers County enormously high rates of breast cancer in women under 50. We're not sure why. That's our next quest. But the first thing that we want to do is to honor Holly and the way that she supported the people around her, and the way that she cared for the people around her, and the way she tried to bring joy to the people around her by making a day of awareness that is memorable. That will be as fun as it can be when the topic is breast cancer. We'd like to raise awareness. We'd like to make sure that women are taking care of themselves, because the sooner you catch it, the better it will be for you. I'm a testament to that. So thank you again to Mayor Shamro. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. And thank you to the commission and everyone else listening. Thank you.
And I'll just say, before we get set up here to go back to our schedule, they, we were approached about doing a resolution because of when we were approached with our scheduling, we could do a proclamation at this time, but not a resolution. Regardless of who's sitting up here, I do hope that there's a resolution before this body in the near future. Michelle spoke a little bit to it. I was, I'm a member of AEW, and we had a presentation at a program in 2017 about the high rates of breast cancer in this community. I know myself, and I'm sure probably everyone in this room knows someone very close to them, if not themselves, that has had breast cancer as a member of this community. And it is definitely an issue that we are aware of, and also understand that we are a high rate, and that is statistically shown out there. And we all need to be together to resolve, to do whatever we can to move that research forward and help the people who need help. So I thank them for that. And I just wanted to apologize to Gia, because I know the resolution had been out there, but we just couldn't get it done in time. So I appreciate your word still, and I think that call to action is going to be relevant no matter what. So thank you for that. So with that, we'll move on to our consent calendar. I'm going to hand that over to you, Sarah.
Okay. The purpose of the consent calendar is to expedite business by grouping non-controversial items together to be dealt with one, by one commission motion without discussion. Any member of the commission, staff, or the public may ask that any item on the consent calendar be removed therefrom and placed elsewhere on the agenda for individual consideration by the commission, and such requests will be automatically respected. If an item is not removed from the consent calendar, the action noted in parentheses on the agenda is approved by a single commission action adopting the consent calendar. One, consideration of approving the minutes of the October 6, 2025, meeting of the city commission. Approval recommended. Two, consideration of adopting to make permanent traffic control order 746, which provides for Trelon parking on 300 South Cedar Street. Approval recommended. Three, consideration of authorizing the issuance of a new redevelopment district liquor license with Class C privileges with Sunday AM/PM sales permit to Umbau Traverse City LLC located at 430 East Front Street, and authorizing the interim city clerk to issue the registration. Adoption approval recommended. Four, consideration of authorizing the publication of the lien notice for delinquent water and sewer balances, which allows the balance to be added to the property tax bill. Approval recommended. Five, consideration of authorizing a purchase order for the, for a 2027 Freightliner M2 aerial bucket truck with hybrid electric gems, which is scheduled purchase. Approval recommended. Six, consideration of authorizing a purchase for replacement odor-controlled carbon canisters at the wastewater treatment plant. Approval recommended. Seven, consideration-
Seven, consideration of authorizing a purchase order for window replacement at the water treatment plant, which will increase energy efficiency. Approval recommended. Eight, consideration of authorizing a confirming purchase order for emergency sewer repairs. Approval recommended. Nine, consideration of authorizing an agreement for the replacement of laboratory countertops, including asbestos abatement, electrical employment at the water treatment plant and the wastewater treatment plant. Approval recommended. Ten, consideration of authorizing an agreement for maintenance and repairs for city-owned electric infrastructure and facilities, which is a collaboration with Traverse City Light &amp; Power. Approval recommended. Eleven, consideration of authorizing the two nesting agreements in connection with the municipal separate storm sewer system MS4 permit. Approval recommended. Twelve, consideration of superseding the September 15, 2025 action of the city commission, authorizing a purchase order in connection with the BSNA cloud-based platform for enterprise resource planning ERP services and instead authorizing a contract for the project, which is a housekeeping matter and to include the annual fee for fiscal year '26, '27. Approval recommended. Thirteen, consideration of authorizing a three-year subscription agreement for legal research subscription services for the city attorney. Approval recommended. Fourteen, consideration of approving the seasonal and transient slip rates at the Duncan L. Clinch Marina for the 2026 season. Approval recommended. Fifteen, consideration of enactment of an amendment to the Traverse City Code of Ordinances, which would recognize Indigenous Peoples' Day starting in 2026. I'm done.
Okay. You were really rolling there, so. All right. Would any commissioner like an item pulled? Go ahead.
I have a brief comment slash question about number three. And then I would like to pull number 10 for one additional question.
Sure thing. So 10 will be pulled, but go ahead with your question about three if we can resolve it.
Yeah, I recognized in the, in the additional information that was shared with me today that it's been a little more than a year since our last update on the healthier drinking culture status in Traverse City. And I, I would appreciate some feedback from my fellow commissioners about whether there's any interest in resuming an ad hoc to do a little bit deeper dive into where we stand versus those goals, objectives, and strategies, and whether, whether there's any, anyone else interested in considering some of the issues that remain from that prior work. So if you could please contact me, that's.
Well, given the composition might change significantly, or will be three new people in a couple of weeks, certainly I think anybody could reach out to you, but also maybe a reminder once the November formation meeting happens.
And anyone here who would like to express an interest, I'd, I'd be very interested. Thank you.
Thank you. And then thank you for that. So we'll remove item number 10 then. Any other item?
That was item number three.
No, no, you wanted item number 10 to remove, though. Sorry. Yep, sorry. Yes. Mitch, did you want an item removed? Eight. Any others? Okay. Would anyone from the public like any item other than eight or 10 removed from the consent calendar? Seeing none, I'll take a motion.
I move that we accept the consent calendar as amended.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. So we'll start with item number 10. And this is the city-owned infrastructure with Light &amp; Power. And you had this pulled, Jackie. Go ahead.
I did. And I, again, I'm grateful for the additional perspective that was provided. But I, I am anxious to understand what the budget impact is since this is going to be essentially funded by an internal transfer of funds. I'd like to know whether we're talking, you know, tens of thousands or hundreds of thousands and, and the source of the, of the fund transfer. So I would appreciate more information about that when it's available.
Sure. I can speak to that a little bit right now. First, I will say that the funds for paying for this, recognizing that this is for our parks essentially, would come from the parks budget. And there is a maintenance budget for parks. It's not large. That's something we need to address longer term, so I want to acknowledge that. But in terms of the actual costs, we don't know exactly just yet. I can get you more of an estimate if you'd like. I can't do that right this evening. But I will tell you that these are, this is necessary work, and we haven't been able to traditionally find other vendors to assist us. And we're grateful that Light &amp; Power is willing to do so and essentially do that at the cost of their employees. So it's less than what we would pay if we went out to the market probably anyway.
Okay. Is there a way that we can move forward with this? I understand there was an RFP process. Is it an RFP or not really?
Not for this. No.
So what's the best way for this to come back to us and close that loop in terms of the costs?
I'd be happy to follow up with the commission with that information if you'd like. I think that if you want to delay it, you can certainly do that. But I can return to you with that information later.
I know there's some seasonal urgency here, and I don't want to delay it. But I do want us to be thorough in terms of our understanding of the scope.
Okay.
So, so with that, I.
Yeah, I have a question.
Oh, no, I'm sorry.
I'm glad you pulled it because I have this question. So will this new arrangement include cleaning those light fixtures? Because, boy, do they need to be cleaned. The ones at the open space, the ones at the farmer's market, they're full of bugs. They look terrible. Spider webs. Is that part of the whole deal?
Traditionally, not. But let me do some digging on that, too, and we can get back to you when I circle back on the information on estimated budgetary impact.
Commissioner Anderson, you're.
Okay. So I recommend that the mayor and interim city clerk be authorized to execute a five-year memorandum of understanding with Traverse City Light &amp; Power for maintenance and repairs for city-owned electric infrastructure as outlined in the October 10, 2025 memo by the Parks and Recreation Superintendent. Such contract subject as to its substance by the interim city manager and it's formed by the city attorney.
Support.
Thank you, Commissioners Anderson and Warner. Any further discussion on this? Go ahead.
Just a question, maybe as a, I don't know, way to clarify, at least what would be helpful to me on this, is just to know from parks maintenance, what funds over the past several years have been expended to do this type of work? Just to have some sense of, I mean, to me, that's close enough as far as figures moving forward. Just, it's a lot more convenient, and then we have a responding party when work needs to be done.
Will do.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from the commission? Seeing none, any public comment on this item? Seeing none, I'll bring it back. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. So now we had item number eight pulled. Just one moment here. I'm moving my screen around. And that was confirming purchase order for emergency sewer repairs. You had this pulled, Mitch?
Obviously, the work has been done, and we have the request for payment for us, and it should be paid. But I was a little concerned when this did happen, not least because it involved the discharge of a relatively small amount of sewage, but still destructive sewage into an adjacent waterway that did result in a preemptive closure of some beaches and closure of those waterways to human access. Yes, it was a small amount, and yes, the normal flow of Kids Creek and the Borden River did flush it fully from the system in a matter of hours. But I am a little concerned that one of these four repairs is flagged as having been the city's responsibility. And I am a little curious about where, how that was different than the other three and the steps that our sewer department is taking to proactively prevent such emergencies emerging in the future.
Yes, and Mr. Krieger, Director of Municipal Utilities, is going to, will you please respond to that? I should say, thank you.
Be glad to. Art Krieger, Director of Utilities with the city. That's a great question, Commissioner Treadwell. So during the preliminary sewer lining project work, they scoped through the piping ahead of the project, you know, the exact pipes they want to line that we had on the list. They found this spot that the city, the one you're talking about out of the four. This location had a sag in the pipe, and the camera went underwater, and they couldn't see what the damage, or, you know, what, if there was damage or anything. So that was found during, actually, the Saw Grant even way back in 2018. And that was why we had it on the list. But that prevented the contractor from actually lining it because he can't line through a sag in the pipe, and we wouldn't really want that to stay in there and have it lined. So that was the reason we needed to go in and fix it. And it was a tough situation right there by the creek, very deep in a sense, like nine feet down. And so there's a lot of groundwater to deal with, and it was over the, conditions were more severe than what the city crew could actually handle. So we called in the expert to do it, and they, they did a great job. But it took them almost all day to do it. Anyway, that's the reason we, we pulled them in to do this project for this particular repair. And it was needed so that we can line it. And it hasn't quite been lined yet, but it will be lined with this project.
So you think that this is an isolated case, that we don't have other sags elsewhere in the system?
There probably are some other sags. We're not aware of any others at this time, but we're still working on doing the televising of the rest of the system that wasn't included in Saw Grant. So, I mean, there could be more out there. They, they typically will flow wastewater through them. They just take a little more buildup behind it to push it through. It acts like a siphon in a way.
And this is one particular area of the city where both the depth of those utilities and the relative height of the groundwater does exacerbate the issues.
Absolutely. Yep.
Do we have any other questions for Art or a motion?
I recommend that the city proceed with full payment to Team Elmers in the amount of $76,561 and seek reimbursement or withhold payment from the responsible contractor as appropriate.
Second, hold on. We need, we need the actual motion at the top of it because that one won't. It's legally tricky enough that we would like the one at the top.
I was reading the, one of the other memos. Recommend that the city commission authorize the confirming purchase order issued to Team Elmers in the not-to-exceed amount of $76,561 for four emergency sewer repairs with funds available in the sewer fund 590.
Thank you. Second. Thank you, Commissioners Treadwell and Shaw. Any further comments on this item? Any public comment on this item? Seeing none, I'll bring it back. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you all for that. And we'll now go on to our old business. So our first order of old business is a public hearing on special improvement 25-02. A question before we start with this, did we get any extra responses before this?
We did not.
And so the current standing, just for the record, is six affirmative votes and five.
Eight.
Eight affirmative and nine no's out of 18 possible responses.
So we're missing one response. And it requires, as a technicality, five votes. If we had had one more objection in writing, it would take six votes.
So because this was a published hearing, we will conduct the hearing. The action that may or may not be taken after will be up to this body. So with that, I will open the public hearing for this special improvement district.
Okay. And I need to read a statement. "The public hearing of an assessment role for a special improvement district also acts as a board of review for those who are receiving a proposed benefit and proposed special assessment. It's extremely important to preserve your right to further appeal by recording your attendance at this meeting. Even if you do not plan to speak publicly to the city commission tonight, we still ask that those in attendance who are a part of the proposed district please state your name and address so that the city clerk may record your attendance."
Okay. Does anyone, is this one where we have to go by first by proximity? Or do we just have any general public comments?
Go by general.
General?
Yep.
Okay. So is there anyone here who would like to speak to, and it can be for or against, this special improvement district? Please go ahead and approach the podium.
Good evening, and thank you for, my name is Michael Newman. That's N-E-W-M-A-N. And we reside at 1223 Santo Street. And I'm coming before you this evening to advocate for passing this resolution. I think that the numbers that you have before you really don't paint the picture of what, what the alley is about. I mean, anyone who has an alley in their backyard knows that, you know, with the weather and the potholes and all the mud and everything that is caused by that really causes a problem. So I took it upon myself to go and seek out from the neighbors information as to whether they would support that. And at the time when I did that, I received more in favor of it than were against it. And some of the neighbors couldn't be reached. And perhaps that's why you don't have all of the votes. But one of the things that I wanted to mention was the fact that some of the neighbors don't have access to the alley, or they don't use the alley. So of course, they're going to vote against that. The majority of people that I spoke to at the time voted in favor and signed the original petition that went to, I believe, the assessors department. And I want to thank them so much, too, from the clerk's office all the way on down because I had questions, and they were just more than polite and willing to respond to that. So I just want to say thank you for that. I just believe that it's a project that needs to happen. There's a lot of people that use the alley because that's the only alley or access they have to their driveway is from that. So I'm just asking you to pass the resolution in favor of, of having the alley paved. I know that some of the people, the biggest question that always is, it's about money. And so you've got people who, you know, are not in favor of it just because of the cost. And I can understand that. If I could help out myself personally, I would do that because of the fact that it's something that's really needed. And I think that the board should approve it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any other member of the public that would like to speak to this item? Seeing none, then I will close the public hearing. And now that's official. And now it will come to the commission.
Are there any members in the audience that are a part of the district? Could you please stand and state your name and address? That's fine. Thank you. Okay, thank you. Thank you.
And, sir, you live within the district too, right?
Yes. Okay, I'll bring it back to the commission now for discussion and our motion. Go ahead, Tim.
But just to the comments that were made, it's not, I mean, it is what it is. But do we, like, has somebody on city staff looked at the numbers as far as who voted yes, who voted no, who has a driveway off the alley, and who doesn't have a driveway off the alley?
No, I don't believe so.
I mean, it doesn't influence what's going to happen tonight. Just curiosity, and if in the future, I don't know what can be done with that information, but just because, yeah, it's still along their property. But there is a point there as far as some property owners actually make use of the alley and other property owners don't.
But to that point, what a current property owner, user does or does not do is not what future property owners will.
Well, right, but they don't have an interest in improving it. And their interest is needed for others to move this forward.
So I have a question somewhere along those lines of, if this does not pass tonight, this doesn't prevent another conversation from happening, and someone bringing it back with, after maybe having different kinds of discussions with their neighbors about the impacts or, or other, because I'm very conscious of the conversations, and I know how those things can go where everybody seems to be on board with something, but then they get the bill. Or, and these, especially in these tougher financial times. That said, this, this doesn't preclude that if six months from now or a year from now, it's, the conversation happens again, it could come back for another discussion, correct?
It could come back, depending on the amount of time the interested folks may need to do a new petition if the costs have changed so that those signing the petition are signing with current information. But absolutely, it could come back.
Go ahead, Jackie.
As you know, I've been sensitive to.
As you know, I've been sensitive to the issue of affordability. And I hope I'm interpreting the packet info correctly, that it represents an additional six hundred, six hundred and forty-one dollars in property tax per year for the next ten-year period.
That's correct.
And, you know, these are homes that mostly have values below the median home value in Traverse City. I see this as potentially a burden for those on fixed incomes or with lower incomes. My question is, what happens if a property owner simply can't afford to pay this extra assessment?
Yeah, it is, it becomes a lien just like any other taxes would. It's collected in the same manner as taxes, so that would be the ultimate result.
So ultimately, ownership of their property is at risk?
If you take it all the way out to the conclusion, it could be yes.
Thank you.
Tim?
Yeah, and not for tonight, but again, for future follow-up. Along those lines, there are programs to help homeowners with utilities, that sort of thing. Are there state programs that would help? It seems like a stretch, but help with something like this where it's a new added burden to somebody that's on fixed income.
I don't know the answer, but we can look.
Thanks.
And on similar lines too, my, another question is, you know, we've kind of shifted even since I have been elected in the last ten years, how we do streets a lot. Like, there used to be some more special assessments, things like that done. Now I think we have different conversations about streets and sidewalks than we did even then. Is it pretty much still for alleys, you either tax yourself with an SID or nothing gets done?
Yes. Yes, and that's because, that's called for in the infrastructure strategy policy of the City Commission.
Right, and so my point to all that, it was really a question for the public because I did already know the answer, but that is something that I think we have to be realistic about. We have skyrocketing home values around here, people who have been in their homes for decades and are just making it due. And I appreciate the comment that would even pay to help their neighbors. And maybe there's something like that, that if we, it brought, got brought back in a different proposal or something that could be brought to the city, that that might change that number. But I too am hesitant to say with a majority against the special improvement district who force attacks on some people that right now don't seem to be prepared to do it. But I think to Tim's point about what's out there is a availability for public funds help, but also the City Commission going, any City Commission going forward, as well as staff looking at, you know, I think for a long time, things were done very black and white, how they always have been, but we've been creative on other things. And perhaps this is something we could be a little bit more creative on so that a piece of infrastructure within the city that is public right of way to a point is not just subject to either taxing yourself or not having anything done at all. That seems like some extreme there. Go ahead, Mitch.
Yes, this gets further back in the process at the entrance of the petition and the assessors district. But is there a specific reason why the SID was demarcated? It's only between Boone Street and Baldwin where this alley continues in an unpaved street, state north of Baldwin for another block?
That is what the property owner that initiated this, those were the boundaries that they proposed. That's the reason.
Reasonable from my perspective if, as I think we should, try to get more of our streets and alleys that are still unpaved and there's a dwindling number of them to a paved status. That is better for cars and users. To try to do it in the whole section rather than just one piece at a time. But if that is what the applicant brought before us, then that's what they did.
And that I think goes also to the point of the system as it has been versus what may be more practical now with what we're facing as far as the status and the conditions of some of these alleys and other spaces that have traditionally been paid for by the taxpayers themselves, but there's a gap.
We've changed for streets, the remaining dirt streets in Traverse City are being proactively paved. I'm not sure we even have any full streets that are still unpaved in the city. But alleys are in that gap where it is only when residents come before us and initiate a special, request for a special assessment district. And then they go through this process to determine if enough of the people on that section are in favor of it.
So unless I'm hearing anything at the last minute, I believe, and I'm, I'll just say this very clearly, this would then take an action that requires five affirmative votes. There are five of us here today. There definitely does not seem to be the momentum to pass this right now with the more negative than positive for the assessment. I want to convey though, that as was mentioned, this certainly can be brought back. It can be, we can have discussions with staff. The City Commission in the future can take up what we're talking about right now of how to not make this just a burden on an unpaved piece of city property. It's basically right of way in the city that maybe it shouldn't just fall on taxpayers anymore to do this themselves. So right now, we are not going to take action on this. It has raised some very interesting points and there's nothing preventing user or anyone else in this area or anywhere else in town from bringing this forward again with the right amount of signatures and information. So as of tonight, we will not be taking any action on this. Please though, as you talk to your neighbors, as other neighbors talk to each other, kind of have that conversation a little bit more and even talk to staff and commissioners going forward because we might be able to make this a little less of a burden on everyone else to just get you all the services that a lot of neighborhoods have always had or had for a very, very long time. So we will leave that old business number one now and we will move now to old business number two, which is consideration of supporting the Grand Traverse County jointly engaging on long-term options for housing city services. So go ahead, Benjamin.
Yes, thank you. Yeah, so as is widely known, Grand Traverse County and the city of Traverse City share this building. The city owns a minority share in this building. The county owns the majority share. We've operated here since nineteen seventy-nine. The building is about forty-six years old. And there's discussion at the county level specifically, and the county has engaged the city on the future of the governmental center in terms of, does it make sense to at some point in time, maybe spend a lot, invest a lot of money in shoring up this building? Does it make more sense to locate some of the city services somewhere else, a different part of the campus? There's a whole number of different options that could be considered, as well as the joint law enforcement center that the county and the city co-occupy. And the Grand Traverse County has issued a request for proposals to have a consultant assist in developing options for the future for housing these different services that are located in this building, as well as a law enforcement center and present those options and all the things that we might want to think about when we consider them. And the county, and I appreciate Grand Traverse County Administrator Nate Eldrill who's here, has brought the city to the table at the beginning. And we did conceptually give our support to them, including in their RFP, a bid alternate essentially where bidders could provide a cost for including the city in that work. Ultimately, if, once the RFPs are submitted, then it would require authorization from the City Commission to actually authorize an agreement for those services. So what I'm really here asking you for tonight is to conceptually support the city and the county jointly engaging a consultant to assess the long-term options for housing those different services that I mentioned. Mr. Eldrill is here and if you'd like to say a few words, I would welcome you to do so. I was at his county board meeting and expressed again our appreciation for the county including us at this stage of the game and we appreciate it. So Mr. Eldrill, we'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Marantet. Good evening, Commissioners. Appreciate the opportunity to give you a brief update and some background as to where Grand Traverse County is in this process. You may recall that in January of two thousand twenty-four, we did a joint facility master plan through Tower Pinkster. Specifically, all county buildings were looked at, but for the city and the county, this building was looked at. And they have some pretty interesting takeaways from that review of this facility. Ultimately, they had some key findings as far as the building system. The HVAC systems are inconsistent, inefficient, and a full modernization is recommended. The electrical infrastructure is obsolete and under capacity for current draw. If you've been here during Halloween or during a crock pot day, you know that we blow fuses. The plumbing systems are at the end of life and that is more important for the people on the first floor than the third floor. And the roof and exterior cladding is falling off the building and it's allowing moisture intrusion. As far as accessibility and security, we are not in compliance with the ADA specific to our entrances, exits, restrooms, and elevators. And our security systems are fragmented, to say the least, and poorly integrated. Energy and sustainability, the energy use intensity exceeds modern standards. We're well ahead of that and the poor insulation and the poor glazing of this does not assist that. Ultimately, Tower Pinkster's conclusion was, this building is functionally obsolete for a modernization of government county, a governmental entity. So with that, they did give us options. The first option they gave us, and for those, I think most of you were at that study session, the first option was to just address the material deficiencies at a price tag of, for two thousand twenty-four dollars, ten point one million dollars. A full renovation in two thousand twenty-four dollars was thirty-two million. Since we met, we had, our May fourteenth, we had a study session with most county commissioners and city commissioners. We toured the building. We heard the facilities master plan from Tower Pinkster. Good questions, good conversation. And from that meeting, we just kind of moved forward. As far as context and background, April second, our board passed a resolution to create a new jail and a justice facility. So that's been resolved. That's the only thing that our board has voted on affirmatively. And to that point, we have begun justice planning. We have created an executive steering committee within the Board of Commissioners and judges, et cetera. That committee has created a justice facility advisory committee, a J-FAC, that will help in the process of advising commissioners going forward with the justice facility, moderate discussion and take public input. And they've also created a JTAC or a Justice Facility Technical Committee that will be comprised of professionals and planning, planning folks to help us work through the process. Getting to why we're here tonight, we've also gone out for three different proposals. One is a facilitated proposal for moderation of community input and internal discussion as it relates to the jail and the J-FAC. We're contemplating that that takes about six to eight months of time to get through that process so that we can have adequate information and public input. We have also gone out for the project management services that Mr. Marantet was referring to for tonight. And that is to assist us with modernization and consolidation of operations at the Boardman and La Frayner campus. So some rationale for why I am here supporting the city's efforts in this collaboration. The county jail is obsolete. It was built in nineteen sixty-four, it's undergone several renovations and it's still obsolete. There are cells that we can't fix. There are mechanical devices within that jail that are just antiquated beyond belief. The sheriff needs to be located with both law enforcement and correctional operations. When we left this campus and went to Woodmere, the ability to supervise and oversee and lead the correctional staff became challenging for law enforcement. The jail is a much smaller operation than law enforcement, but they have an equal amount of liability associated with them and the challenges in their day-to-day operations. Both the sheriff and the chief wish to be, wish to remain co-located. So that presents us a challenge because the city police department cannot operate outside of the city limits and the sheriff has to have a home, at least conceptually, within the county seat. So Grand Traverse County and the city are tenants in common of this building. And what that means is we control seventy-six percent of the operation. You control twenty-four percent of the operation. The building is co-owned. So you have a fifty percent say in what happens to this building. We are currently working with Ms. Tribbleau and our council to kind of work through that agreement that we have that's dated to try to update it, make it more user-friendly so that if sometime, sometime in the future, we have to have a push either way to determine what we do with this building, there needs to have, that has to be resolved at some point in time. And as I just said, the governmental center is functionally obsolete. And lastly, once we build a jail, this jail will come down. And once that jail comes down, this building loses its source for water and heat. So we are here to answer questions that you may have. We are working through, we've put out applications for the J-FAC. We've requested applicants to apply online and we'll begin to see those very, very soon. So if this board sees fit to collaborate with the county on this, I think it would be greatly appreciated.
Just to clarify, because I've been in some of these meetings with you, but I think you jumped into some vernacular there. So J-FAC would be your justice facility, correct?
Justice, yeah, I apologize.
No, it's okay.
Justice Facility Advisory Committee is the J-FAC. The JTAC is the Justice Facility Technical Committee.
Great, thank you. So questions for Mr. Eldrill right now? I mean, the request at this point is for us to go in on kind of the RFP process. So there'd be a lot more decisions to be made in the future, but I know we had the study session, but have some more things. So go ahead, Mitch.
Ultimately, it's up to what the county does, but has there been any even conceptual investigation of an Act four twenty-five for properties on La Frayner corridor so they could legally be still in this county seat?
We have not yet engaged in that conversation, but that, if that is something that we wish to consider, we certainly could.
I'm just seeing it as a potential option that I don't see on paper, but.
So your proposal would be to annex La Frayner and give up this, or not build here on this property that we all already jointly own?
No, I'm not proposing that. I'm just wondering if that is something that anybody has been considering.
Interesting.
We have not yet talked about that, Commissioner Tribbleau.
Other questions right now?
No, no questions. I can make the motion.
Fantastic, thank you.
Can we drop the word "conceptually"?
Oh, yes? Can we drop the word "conceptually"? Why would we just conceptually support it?
Right, we want to actually support it.
We're supporting the concept.
Okay. I move that the City Commission support the city of Traverse City and Grand Traverse County jointly engaging a consultant to assess long-term options for housing city services, specifically those presently located at the governmental center on Boardman Avenue and the Joint Law Enforcement Center on Woodmere Avenue with any future agreements to require City Commission authorization.
Support.
Thank you, Commissioner Sean Warner. Appreciate that, Warner. So we, Mr. Commissioner Warner, that's how we didn't have the "conceptually supports" the concept of working together conceptually. Do we have any other comments or questions from the commission at this time? Go ahead, Mitch.
Yes, I can understand the current assessment from the consultants that this building is functionally obsolete. And I have sat in the training room on a winter day and can feel the draft coming in through the window cracks in the corner. But I do have to wonder, yes, this building has been sitting in, for forty-six years, of how do we get to the best point of a building that is still functional forty-six years down the road? That is in all likelihood past the time that any of us are still serving on this board and even staff will likely no longer be in their current positions. But we still need to, at both the city and the county level, be planning for a future that is far beyond us. And I don't want us to find, want to find the city and the county in a situation where we decide that this building needs to be fully replaced rather than repaired. And then after a similar length of time, again, the building is structurally obsolete when repairs could have kept it in order in a way that holds time better.
I'm going to underline a point that was made by Mr. Eldrill though, that once the jail is gone, the heat for this place is gone.
And water.
And water, yes, but since you mentioned the drafts and I know how cold it gets in here, the heat is always front of my mind, but I think that, hold on Mitch, please. I think that that is the point though, that I've, we've been on some of these conversations. We had the joint meeting. I think that everybody is keeping in mind of a building that we can build that will be much more both functional and ecologically friendly than certainly what we're in right now. No building lasts forever as it's intended, well, I shouldn't say no building. Very few do anymore if we look at antiquities versus today. Granted, I enjoy seeing the Pizza Huts being reused in different places or the O'Reilly's in Charlevoy, that's clearly the old family video. But I think the intention seems to be from everyone in the committee that we will build something that has a good lifespan and will serve several generations of and will serve several generations of Grand Traverse County residents going forward.
And we have written, I'm sorry.
Yeah, go please.
We have written the RFP, understanding that we, while we have preferences, it's written in such a fashion that those preferences are not apparent. So remodeling this building is still something that is an option, it just will come out of this facilitated process between the county, the city, and the facilitator.
And a whole new system in it.
And a whole new system.
Go ahead, Jackie.
I'm curious about the advisory committee makeup, and it sounds as though you have existing advisory committees for the jail and that project. Do you anticipate a similar advisory approach, and will there be seats available for designated city representatives?
Certainly. So the J.FAC does have city representation on it, both at the, we're going to ask for the city commission level as well as law enforcement. That justice facility is contemplating both city, county, and state police within the facility, along with the prosecuting attorney's office, and perhaps even first floor elected officials and city service providers. So while there's not a, there's not a, obviously, we're a long way from making any big decisions, but the leading horse for the justice facility is to be on the north side of this campus adjacent to Washington. So between the two courthouses, and if we can have a building there sufficient to have the first floor as well as law enforcement prosecutor and a jail, that would be ideal. Because of the, you know, the county seat issues, we wouldn't have to worry about that at that point in time. We already have an existing relationship between law enforcement and county city employees that would benefit from that. But certainly, I think if we have a GovCenter discussion where ultimately we say, you know what, we're going to have to split this baby and go somewhere, you know, the county is going to go up to La Frayner for their governmental center services, and the city will have to stay here, I think that would certainly require some type of a public input process.
Which would include city commissioners.
Thank you.
24% of them.
Most, I think probably very importantly, to those staff.
Absolutely, yeah.
Any other questions or comments from the commission right now? Okay, I'm going to have Nate swap out and open up for any public comment that anybody might have on this item.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Nate.
Any public comment on this? Okay, seeing none? I'll bring it back. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes, so look forward to that further discussion. Just wanted to thank again, I think that we've all noted, but the improving, just the improved dialogues between the city and the county, thanks to staff initiating a lot of that, has been really welcomed over the last couple of years, and I'm really glad to see that as we're heading into these conversations about this very old, big, lovely building, and then maybe moving out of it. So now we'll move, go ahead and move into our discussion about the neighborhood associations. This, to share with everybody, was originally on consent calendar. Commissioner Shaw and I were in that and decided that this is something we've all been waiting to hear an update on, so we wanted to pull it and put it on the agenda. So we're going to have Deb Allen come up. Did you want to say anything first, or?
Just to introduce, though, lovely deputy city manager Deb Allen, who's taken the lead on this. Thank you, Deb.
Thank you so much. Good evening. Commissioners, you've all heard about our neighborhood associations. At one point, we were anticipating 14 different neighborhood associations within the city limits. Two of those neighborhood associations merged, so we have 13 neighborhood associations. We started conversations with the respective neighborhood associations earlier this year, kind of sharing the concept of a president's council, and from there, we had a meeting last May. We talked with all of them, we talked again in July, and since then, we have had 10 of the neighborhood associations commit their support for the president's council. We talked at the meeting, we talked about potential agenda items. This would not be a decision-making board, this would be a communication-focused committee, if you will, or council. That would be a way of sharing communication both from the city as well as from the neighborhoods back to the city. So I wanted to make sure that people understood that this was not a voting or an action-related committee, it was really meant to be communicative.
And so this council would essentially replace the current model, which is where there's a staff liaison designated to each neighborhood association, but we would continue to provide staff attendance at neighborhood association meetings where it made sense.
And I would continue to be, or I would say the deputy city manager would continue to be the point person. Certainly, it's my intent to continue to do that. So I think that we would not in any way take something away from neighborhood associations if they would want to have, but I also see this as being a collective opportunity to gain insight as to what are areas of concern or discussion, and then share that unilaterally amongst all the neighborhood associations so that there is truly equity in communication.
Go ahead, Jackie.
Deb, could you please walk us through, let's say a neighborhood has a particular issue with, I don't know, a piece of paving in their neighborhood, and they would like to work through their neighborhood association to get some resolution or some attention to that issue. How in this structure would they go through that?
Well, in this particular case, they would still make an application through the traffic committee that would address that issue, but right in the form that is on the city's website, it specifically asks, "Have you addressed this issue with your neighborhood association?" So it encourages getting that support, and so that actually lends, I would say, in essence, more credence to the issue from the standpoint that if it has been vetted through the neighborhood association. So it doesn't exert any, any of the role or responsibility of the neighborhood association. We certainly hope that it will enhance it.
You tell, Floria.
One, one second question. I'm sensitive to the fact that our neighborhood associations have a variety of bylaws. They've kind of, some came off the internet, and some were written in committees, and so they, they're pretty diverse, I think. Are we confident that this, this approach will, will mesh with existing bylaws, or do some bylaws perhaps need to be modified by the associations?
I'm going to defer to the city attorney on this from the standpoint that it is not the city's intent, as I understand it, in any way to dictate or to direct how each of the neighborhood associations would establish. We have been asked questions if we can provide, you know, information or insight, but we've been reluctant to do that because each one is independent of the city in itself. But hopefully, they could collectively get some wisdom from each other, but I, again, I'll defer.
Yeah, I don't really have much to add. The, the associations are, came about organically, each one, so, you know, they don't, there's not like a model for, for the bylaws for, for that, that the city can provide to them, and I can't give them legal advice, obviously, so they kind of come to us as they come, and then we'll certainly work with each one to make sure that we can communicate with them. And they may need to change their bylaws, depending on how they were established, but we'll have to wait and see how that comes about.
Okay, thank you.
Just a really quick, though, on that, having said on a lot of bylaws committees on nonprofits in my day, so slightly different, but because this wouldn't be taking, this body is really just a conversational, like it's, it's not an active, there's no actions that will be taken through this association, it will be an information sharing, which is what our, our leadership of a organization are empowered to do by their positions. I guess unless, it would seem like unless a bylaw specifically said you cannot participate in anything where your board isn't present or something, like, there shouldn't be anything prohibiting anybody from participating in this new formation, though, right?
I can't imagine that it would be. I mean, it really is, it's, it's really a means of communication and sort of gathering that to coalesce in one, so everybody gets the information at one time from the same source, and then they can disperse it back. That's what it's meant for, so.
And Heather, did you have your hand up before?
I did. You said that you had 10 neighborhood association endorsements of the president's club. Are there 14 neighborhood associations?
There's actually 13. There were intended to be 14, but if you remember, Oakwood and Triangle combined, so there are 13 neighborhood associations that have been established.
And you don't feel that the, that the three that haven't checked in are like vetoing by absence, it's just more like missing an action?
There have been multiple attempts via email as well as phone call with any of the communication, any of the contact information that we had, to reach out to the individuals more than five times to get feedback.
All right. Thank you. Do we have more questions or a motion? I see, I was gonna say, I see a, I see a glasses changing happen.
I recommend that the resolution recognizing neighborhood associations in Traverse City be amended to establish a neighborhood residence council. Consideration of amending the resolution, recognizing neighborhood associations to provide for a framework for neighborhood president's council, to assist with communication and collaboration with a staff liaison to no longer be designated to each neighborhood association, with staff participation in neighborhood association meetings to be provided as needed.
Support.
Thank you, Commissioners Anderson and Treadwell. Any comments or questions further from the commission right now?
And it's okay that the wording of this is really not clear?
It's kind of wonky. Well, I think what it's basically, what I wrote it to say in a kind of wonky way is to say, before we had staff liaisons, so we're kind of rescinding that as part of this, too.
Yeah, no, it's the, it's the fir, second sentence.
Yeah.
You know, we're amending to establish, and then we're amending, it's not, second one is even an incomplete sentence.
Yeah, consideration of amending those, resolution recognizing neighborhood associations to provide a framework with.
Sorry, I, my computer just like closed, the screen just closed. Let me pull that up here.
So what it says is the resolution, sorry, I'm saying this a little bit out loud to help myself, too. The resolution recognizing neighborhood associations in Traverse City be amended to establish a neighborhood president's council, period. Consideration of amending the resolution recognizing neighborhood associations to provide a framework for a neighborhood president's council to assist with communication.
I think that it's been dubbed up.
Yeah, yeah.
You need to cross some of that out.
Yeah, so it should just be the...
Now, I was like, what is missing?
Insert, insert the word "is" before "to provide."
Yes.
Right, right, yep.
Thank you.
Thank you for that, yes. Okay, but, so we'll have that as a, you read that in there, didn't you, right, correct? Yeah, so we don't need to amend the motion. Do we have any other comments or questions? The only thing I will add, because I've had some people bring it up to me, that they don't go to their neighborhood association meetings, they're on inconvenient night, or they are, you know, not their cup of tea, they don't feel conversations are welcome, and those have ebbed and flows over the years as leaderships change, and that's part of organization, right? And so I would say that to Jackie's question, it's great that that is going to be another, this is another way for issues in neighborhoods to be addressed through this council, but also don't want to let people make, I want to clarify to people that you can still go and report things on sites, contact staff yourself, you don't have to go through the neighborhood association either, if for whatever reason it's not serving your purpose. This is just a way to improve that communication amongst the elected leadership and to help our city staff out so we don't have to find 13 people to fill meetings for the next few years. So I just wanted to clarify that, because I have heard that a little bit lately, too.
Thank you.
So, any public comment on this item? Please feel free. Going once? Okay, seeing none, I'll bring it back to the commission. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you for all your hard work on that, Deb, and really, I mean, I don't think we have credit enough, but great way to innovate something that was starting to kind of stretch staff at the seams and find a nice solution that works for everybody, so thank you for that. So now, I'm going to gladly hand this back over to Jackie for our ethics ordinance, so take it away.
She's back, with, with a grateful heart for all of you who have traveled this path to come to the point where we may actually be able to enact an ethics ordinance this evening. The last time we were here, there was some high-quality input and suggestions about improvements, and those have been incorporated. Our timing is also, I think, excellent, because on November 3rd, there will be an opportunity for the voters to amend our city charter to require, fourth, sorry.
Although early voting.
To amend our city charter, to actually require exactly such an ordinance. So I am, I am very grateful to everyone who has spent months making improvements and, getting to the point that we are at now. And I wanted, I wanted to share an email from one of the, the members of the public who has been a faithful inputter and participant, and there have been a number of them, who could not be here tonight. But what Judy Nelson shared in her email was just a reminder about why we are doing this, and it is to establish and strengthen even greater trust between the public and, and its public servants. And it is, it is so important that we have managed to include in this, this ordinance not only direct conflicts, but also perceived, and, and also indirect interests are covered within the policy, so. And the inclusiveness of this, in that it's not just staff, and it's not just elected officials, it is everyone who serves the citizens of Traverse City. And I am, I am, I'm really excited about this, so thank you all. Some of the, the most improvements, I think, since our last conversation are under the section on penalties. And I asked the city attorney if she would mind highlighting that conversation and see if there are further decisions that we need to perhaps make tonight before taking a vote.
Sure. So like Commissioner Anderson said, there was a lot of good discussion at the last meeting, and I tried really hard to take good notes, and I think that I captured what the commission was talking about at the last meeting. So throughout the document, there are some changes tracked that I won't go through page by page, but I hope that I was able to capture your intention in that. The penalty section, I left highlighted, there had been sort of a menu of options in that section for the commission to consider, sort of going from like a, a public, you know, a resolution of non-compliance or something like that, all the way up through a misdemeanor. I don't suggest that we take the route of a misdemeanor, I kind of redlined it the way that I would suggest the commission move forward. Of course, it's totally up to you, the five of you, how you want to do that. So the penalty section leaves the ultimate ability up to the district court to do, to enforce a civil infraction, that would be between 50 and a $500 fine, depending on what the judge decided. There are also some other options, and I think that these can all work together the way that it's written, but you can take them or leave them as you, as you like. The arbiter could recommend some sort of employment action, that would be a recommendation for discipline. The arbiter could recommend that if there were a contract involved, and for some reason there had been a conflict or something, that the arbiter found to have been present when that was voted on, that that contract could be terminated. And then there, section C under this section talks about upon a finding of violation, the district court is empowered to either find a civil infraction, also to find a public servant that doesn't file their disclosure statement timely, and find them guilty of misconduct, which could have differing consequences depending on what the situation was. And then just a reminder at the bottom of the penalty section that this ordinance does not supersede any state law types of remedies that could be available in different situations. So that was how I left it, but I'm open to what the commission's thoughts are on the penalty section.
Go ahead. Yeah, I have a question about the annual disclosure statement. We're going to be notified of when we have to file that? I mean, it doesn't say, like, at the beginning, you know, January 1st, or...
Right, so it's, it's required every January, but we can certainly come up with an internal process to calendar that. I think that's a good idea. I don't think that necessarily needs to be in the ordinance, but I think it's fair to have, have a...
Yeah, well, if it, yes, if you're getting charged, fined up to $10 a day, you definitely want to know what that date is.
Right.
I, I think that, here's my, you know, editor thing, I'm sorry. Section C, number one, it says any public servant who violated a provision, but the one up above, or... one up above, or right below that, it's in present tense, any public servant who fails, so I would think that you'd want both of them in present tense.
Okay.
Any public servant who violates. And then back, to, to go back out of that section for a second, up to page nine of 12, or page 140, also in red, the arbiter shall provide an annual report to the city commission containing the number and nature of, you've got a typo in there, complaints. So, we're not going to put in there that we want to see this back in the commission, this is, that's not in this ordinance that the commission is gonna look at this in a year, but we definitely want to do that, right?
It's, it's in the motion.
Okay, so, oh, okay.
So, once the, yeah, so it's, once the motion, if and when it's passed, the clerk will calendar that for the year.
Okay. Well, I think that this ethics ordinance, following on the neighborhood association presidents club, they both are really a means to build and, public trust. And so, it's, it's really nice having them both on our agenda today, and I support, I support this as it is, it looks pretty good to me.
That's great. Do we have other input, or would somebody like to make a motion?
I have one item to add.
Okay, go ahead.
I just wanted to mention that when this was introduced, I brought up just the fact that the police chief reports to the city manager, city manager reports to the city commission, and the city attorney is gonna work with the police chief on establishing a policy within the police department, so that if there was ever an issue involving the city manager, for instance, and for that matter, the city commission, a city commissioner, that the police department would turn that over to a different law enforcement agency as soon as possible.
Yep, great. Go ahead, Jackie.
And, and I did want to mention that there was quite a bit of conversation in the ad hocks regarding training and, and, you know, being sure that everyone who is impacted by this is fully familiar with the requirements, has a chance to have all of their questions answered, and, and is going to, going to be receiving a lot of guidance to stay on the rails. And, and there will be, both the city attorney and, and the interim city manager have, have committed to developing a training process and materials for that.
Right, and you're probably gonna see that starting in the onboarding with the new city commission. The interim city clerk and I have already been talking about how to integrate some of that into sort of a reimagined onboarding process for the commission, so everyone will get that.
And some kind of contact, I have a question, who do I contact?
Sure, yeah. And I was, I just wanted to say that I appreciate what Jackie just pointed out as well. I think the goal of this, and I know probably not everybody in the public has sat and read the entire document, although you should, I think it was a lot of really good work, and it's not actually that long.
It's a good code.
Yeah, so I just wanted to say that I think if you look through it, and I know certainly every meeting, and I see Doug Kimpel here from, who was at many of them, and Judy couldn't attend, but there was a lot of good citizen input too, that I think really helped to keep this as a document that was a guiding star for everyone to work from, reasonable and applicable, so we weren't trying to set the bar so high that one slip-up was gonna cause any major issues, or that it could be used as a weapon or as a sword, as we talked about, that was not the goal. And so, I, I do want to say that I appreciated that, was always at the forefront between Jackie doing excellent job of leading it, and also having, I think it's the one ad hoc I've been on for policy, that's, there were citizens at every single one, other than cannabis. The five years of cannabis I spent. But, but I think that's been really great to help us keep, get that public input, the outside perspective, as well as our own internal of knowing how, what it is to do these jobs, to be on boards, and to try to know how to best behave without it being, feeling like it's a sword over your, sword Damocles over you. So I wanted to commend Jackie there too, for that. So with that, sorry, I did get a little out of order on my own, but I'm just so excited. Do we have a motion?
Perhaps Jackie would like to make a motion?
Yes.
Oh, you sure? I'm sure it goes. I recommend that an amendment to the Traverse City Code of Ordinances to Chapter 225 Ethics, which establishes the ethics ordinance, which was introduced on October 6th, 2025, be enacted with an effective date eight days after publication, and further, that the city commission reviews Chapter 225 Ethics within 12 months of the effective date.
Second. Thank you, Commissioner Shaw. Any further comments from the commission? Seeing none, any public comment on this item? Seeing none, I'll bring it back. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Congratulations.
Well done, and thank you, everybody, I'm very excited about this. Now it's on the voters, this, this exists whether the charter amendment passes on the 4th or not, but reminder to voters that that is one of the things you can vote on, it just requires that we have an ethics policy. This is the current policy that stands no matter what, but it entrines that requirement there, so. Moving on now, we are revisiting the proposal about the copy shop, so I will hand that over to you, Benjamin.
Yes, thank you. At the August 18th city commission meeting, the commissioners passed a resolution directing staff to review a request from the owners of Copy, Copy Shop, excuse me, for the city to sell a small portion of property that's just to the west of the copy shop for a dollar. We did get staff input on that request, and I'm coming back to you with the results of that input, and I am supporting the recommendation from the employee team that we not move forward with this sale for the following reasons, which include, but aren't necessarily limited to, that in our opinion, the sale of the property doesn't provide a public benefit, it doesn't advance the public purpose, if you will. Releasing the property could cause some future maintenance issues for utilities that are located there. And then the city's master plan also shows that area is a potential for future development and possibly a roundabout, which would require a realignment of Woodmere, 8th and Railroad intersection, and selling this property could hamper the city's ability to make improvements at that intersection in the future. And so, there was also discussion regarding a pocket park request, and we're also not recommending it for the reasons I really just mentioned with respect to possible redevelopment at this point in time. So, you're not required to adopt a motion, but I think it would be helpful, and I know Mr. Rickard from the copy shop, Dan Rickard is here, but I do think it would be helpful to provide some direction in one fashion or another, whether it is that the city commission is denying the request, or if you want to take a different tack. That's it from me.
Okay. Do we have any questions right now? Go ahead, Heather.
I have a question. So if the property where the copy shop is now were to become part of a development in the future, and that piece of property was, the developer thought it would be integral to how that development went forward, could they come back to us again?
Yes, there's nothing that limits someone returning to the commission.
Likewise, if the city decides to move forward with putting a roundabout here, or putting a pocket park, or some future development, and it turns out that we don't need all of this parcel, or there could be something else to shift that parcel boundary, that would also be an option.
Was, were, did the staff have a chance to talk to Mr. Rickard before this meeting about where the recommendation was leading?
No, but he was provided with a copy of it.
So, I guess I would say, do, does anybody in the commission want to make a motion, or how do I, go ahead, Tim.
Yeah, I'll make the motion that the city commission deny the request from Ruby Rose LLC to purchase the city property as requested in the letter received on July 2nd, 2025, and further, the city commission does not designate the city-owned parcel as a pocket park.
Thank you, Commissioner Warner.
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Anderson. Any further discussion on this? Yes, I was gonna say, so I was gonna invite Mr. Rickard up, since I wasn't, that's why I checked to see if we had had any formal, but if you'd like to address, you may, or, sorry, I know you're, you're back there, I'm trying to stall for time to give you a second there.
I'm Dan Rickard, the owner of the copy shop at 713 East 8th Street in Traverse City, Michigan. Well, I totally respect the findings of the staff and the commission, whether I get the little chunk of property or not, is probably not gonna have a big effect on me, but to think that five years from now, a developer's gonna come along and sweet-talk everybody into developing that all the way to the corner, is a big disappointment. That's quite honestly, I just think that it's gonna just be another thoroughfare like any other city, that's the only green space left on 8th Street. And that disappoints me, more than the fact that I'm not gonna get a sliver of property. It's not really gonna affect my ability to do anything. Once upon a time, I was hoping that I could figure out how to get that property, build a building next to me, figure out how to retire and push all my stuff literally out one door and in another door to make my life easier. It's been proposed out there for developers for over five years now, and nobody's bit. So, I just would like to have the city commission really think about five years from now, quote unquote, saying, "Oh, somebody's gonna put up four stories all the way to the corner, 'cause it's a much bigger tax revenue, as opposed to keeping some green space." So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Tim. Part of this, nearby this parcel, right, where the pocket park was suggested, there is public right-of-way, that's where the trail goes through as well, right? And that is protected, correct, where the trail is, that's?
Yes.
Yes, so, go ahead, Tim.
Yeah, and to that, along that line of thinking, to me, it's extremely unlikely that, even if we don't designate it as a pocket park tonight, or in the coming months, it's extremely unlikely that it is anything but a park, the whole duck thing, if it quacks like a duck, that we, even our city attorney has used in the past to talk about parks. So even if we, as a city, don't call it a park, based on experience, I would fully expect if tonight we had a proposal in front of us for a four-story building down the corner, that there would be a lawsuit pretty quickly from members of our community saying, "No, this is a park, and you can't do that." So, not that it allays your concerns, but I really don't see it being anything but a park in our lifetimes.
Mm-hmm.
Treat it as a park, even though it's officially not a park.
Right, and, and even though we have some interesting, we've had some legal input on some of those arguments, I would also agree with you, though, that it's the, the way it is, and where it is, and how it is, makes it, it challenges the idea that somebody could go to the corner there, as well as, I think the one hesitation I always have with a park that people realize but don't realize is, if you, once you designate something a park, if you change its use in any way, sometimes that can trigger a lawsuit too, or it needs a vote of the people. I'd hate to tie something up that doesn't have a full plan with it yet, that there could be a really innovative idea that comes up, that's for the public good that comes in the meantime, that that would then cut it off as well. So that's my hesitancy, not that I don't like that preserved, it's right there in my, right across the street from me, and I love that space, so I just think that, as of right now, this isn't quite ripe as well, so, go ahead, Heather.
And the city is maintaining the grass.
Hmm.
Who's cutting it?
Janet.
Well, we need to do something about that.
Yes, we do. For the record, because I think it's worth noting, Mr. Rickard has taken care of it since 2007, so I want that on the record for the public out there, I can't hear him.
Well, that needs to be taken care of immediately.
I made a note.
Okay.
Yes, thank you for pointing that out. Okay, I do have to, sorry, I need to write myself. Is there any public comment on this item? Any further public comment? Seeing none, I will bring it back to the commission. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. All right, sorry, I've gotta, my screen's doing something very weird. Here we go. Um, I just wonder what's the next item?
Paving marking.
Oh, yeah, so now we'll move on to our item that is an exciting presentation that several of us have been waiting for, which is an update on pavement marking.
Yes, thank you. Chris Weber, our street superintendent, is here tonight and is gonna do the majority of the talking from the employee team standpoint. I just wanted to say a few things. Of course, everyone knows that completing paving marking early in the season has been challenging for some time, it's largely due to contractor availability and tight scheduling windows. We reached out to a number of communities in the state of Michigan and even the state of New York, and found that many are facing similar issues, and our desire tonight is to share with the commission some of the thinking that's gone into different options that we could pursue. And I want to just share that we recognize, and we're talking more and more on the employee team, that we're here to help provide the commission with information you need to make values-based decisions, and it doesn't always mean that it's the cheapest, financially cheapest thing to do. And so I just want to acknowledge that we have reviewed several different approaches to improve efficiency, cost control, and flexibility, and some of the options evaluated, and Chris will talk about these, include a fully contracted endeavor that had a single deadline, with all work to be completed by July 1st. We haven't in the past established deadlines, and, and Chris will talk about this, but mind you, if we do establish certain deadlines, it may or may not encourage contractors to do the work, or it may come at a significant premium. And then, fully contracted in two phases, where we split the work into two deadlines, Chris will talk about that. Bringing the work in-house, so a totally city-run operation, what that would look like. Bring the work in-house with a single deadline, with all work completed by July 1st, and then potentially a hybrid model, which would be a mix of in-house and contracted work. And then lastly, sort of as a sixth potential option, is I've asked the employee team, and we'll be working with HR and the city attorney, to explore if we could leverage some volunteers to assist in getting some of the work done in places where it's not as high-risk, like parking lots, for instance. And so those are some things that even if, let's say, folks who are really interested in making our streets more accessible and aren't as excited about parking, they might be willing to help out with parking lots to help make some of the other work possible sooner. But there's all sorts of options. We really aren't looking for any decisions tonight, we're just kicking the conversation off, and with that, Mr. Weber, I'll turn it over to you. Thank you.
I just want to say too, we're always excited when it's a Chris Weber presentation, so proceed.
I might be a little more toned down tonight, especially with all this ethics talk, so. But yes, everyone, I'm Chris Weber, I'm the Streets Division Superintendent. We just wanted to provide you with an update with some of the research that we've been doing, and like the interim city manager mentioned, this is not a situation or issue that is unique to us. A lot of the municipalities we've reached out to have either explored these same options themselves, or are in the process of exploring them, like the city of Ann Arbor, for example, mentioned that they are currently exploring the option of doing their pavement markings in-house, and they said, "Let us know what you find out." So, and we're gonna share that back and forth with their team and what they've found and what we've found as well. So, and our goal is, you know, always to just, to get these done in a timely fashion at the most cost-effective way. So I'll try to stick to the slides and not get too animated, but basically just a quick outline of the pavement markings program, as I've explained before, we have two separate contracts. We have the long lines contract, which is not what we're talking about tonight, which are the center lines and edge lines, like a fog line or a bike lane line. That's one contract, and then the contract we'll be specifically focusing on tonight is the legends, crosswalks, and parking, and that kind of encompasses parking lines, crosswalks, handicap parking spaces and cymbals, bicycle facilities, legends, which include sharows, bicycles, directional arrows, onlies, railroads, those type of things, and then all city-owned parking lots. For this analysis, we're evaluating approaches for legends, crosswalks, and parking markings, or LCP. It does not include that long line, I guess I jumped ahead of myself. We, our purpose was to evaluate five or six potential approaches for managing the legends, crosswalks, and parking pavement markings options to ensure timely, consistent, and cost-effective completion. Our goal is to improve completion timelines, balance cost and staffing capacity, maintain quality and safety, and build flexibility for weather and contractor delays. So as the interim city manager mentioned, we've explored, or we will be kind of outlining several options. Option one is fully contracted, single deadline. It's not something we've done previously where we have a hard deadline in our contract, but we would propose that all pavement markings within this contract be completed prior to July 1st. We did reach out to our current contractor and kind of outlined that, and number one, would they even be able to complete the work, and if so, kind of what are we looking at? So they were able to provide some figures and, and kind of weigh the options if they would even be able to do that. Option two, fully contracted, but two phases, July 1st deadline for a priority- July 1st deadline for a priority area, whatever we designate. So high pedestrian traffic areas, major streets or thoroughfares, the downtown areas or areas that we designate as a priority, we want completed prior to the busy tourist season. We would designate that as the Phase One, completed prior to July 1st. And then, the second phase would be potentially like an August 31st deadline, so that it's still getting completed while we're still, you know, in summer technically. So that's option two. Option three would to be to bring the work in-house, but not have that rigid, hard deadline. Let us bring the work in-house, acquire the staff and the equipment needed and the training to be able to do the work in-house and kind of do it as it fits without that hard deadline. Option four would be to bring the work all in-house, but have that hard, single deadline of the July 1st, which, which could, you know, be challenging. Option five would be a hybrid model, which would still be to contract out certain markings, which maybe require some, a different skill set or equipment that maybe is better suited for a professional painter, where we could do some of the things that are either less desirable for the contractor to do or more costly for the contractor to do, or things like city-owned parking lots, which frees them up to do the markings for bikes and multimodal, that type of thing. So we'll get into, you know, details on each one of those. And then option six is status quo. We leave it as is.
Can I ask a quick question?
Sure.
First of all, if we have questions on each option after you've presented, do you want us to ask as we go for the commissioners?
Yeah, let's keep it fresh.
Okay, I like that, too. I have ADHD. And then also, I just wanted to, really, we've talked about this enough in the past, we kind of know when, as commissioners and as staff, when these projects can start, but also because we are presenting this to the public. Can you just give a quick overview, because you've gone through all the options and the deadlines? Realistically, when could accrue, let's say, you all or contract could start the first realistic kind of roundabout dates? Because I think, you know, I think sometimes we think, "Oh, it's when the snow's melted," or it's April 15th, like with underground construction. So kind of ballparking so people can kind of have an idea of what windows we're looking at?
Not really throwing a date at it, but maybe some factors. So the paint really needs 50-degree weather. There are some alternatives, because we do use waterborne paint. There are cold-weather waterborne paints that are an option that would allow you to get into those 40-degree temperatures and still cure properly, but they are more costly. It is an option that the city of Holland is doing because of the Tulip Festival. They have to have their markings down so early in the season, so that is one thing that they do. But it is, it is more costly. So I wouldn't really know a date, but just consistent 50-degree temperatures to allow for the paint to cure properly.
Great, I just wanted to put that out there, so no matter what option eventually people go with, people aren't, you know, April 20th sitting around and saying, "Well, why haven't they started on my street yet?" So, but go ahead and proceed, sorry, I just wanted that as the context of the conversation.
And to that point, you say consistent, how long a period does it have to be? Or can it be a three-day period that you can do some and then later on?
They just need 50-degree temperatures.
Because we've had 50-degree temperatures in March.
Yeah. Great, thank you for that.
And I think you're going to, you're going to talk about the through-the-night option, right, in six days? Okay, good.
Yep. So, number one, the fully contracted, single deadline. Currently, we do not have this hard deadline in our contract, which requires the painting to be completed by a certain date, other than within the fiscal year for that contract. Talking with our current contractor, who we've been working with for several years that does good work, we just have a lot of markings. Pitch this to them, number one, would they even be interested in it? And number two, would they actually be able to do it in this deadline? They've been doing it long enough that they know kind of exactly how long it takes them to paint each type of marking. So we provided them our most up-to-date inventory and they were able to look at it and say, ballpark, they would need 107 full working days. That would require night work or cold-weather paints to be able to start early enough in the season with a full staff of about eight people and efficient equipment. So a lot of the equipment that they use is not off-the-shelf painting. It's stuff that they've modified or adapted because they do it day in and day out. It's like anybody, you know, they, they adapt and make the stuff work for them and work better. So, the equipment that they use would not be exactly the same as stuff that we would be able to purchase, and that just comes with experience. So I asked the contractor, "Put a number on it. If you thought you could do it, what do you think it would, to make it work for you?" Our current contract is $148,000 with no deadline. And they estimated between $250,000 and $300,000 to be able to guarantee everything be completed by that deadline. Some considerations would be that they would have to, currently, they, when they paint a crosswalk, they do it in quadrants, so they're not closing the entire intersection. And that takes time. To be more efficient, it could require them to do full closures, where they close a block at a time. They do all the pavement markings, it takes about 45 minutes to cure. They reopen it, move to the next. So that's something we also have to evaluate is the impact on the public. So, that's something to consider. The pros, oh, sorry, I lost. So we got the full closure thing. Pros would be simple management. It's just like we have now, we have one contractor. We have a list, they know exactly what they need to do and when they need to do it, and they go out and do it. And that the other pro would be that there's no internal staffing impact. We're, we're busy, you know, and a lot of the stuff you've seen with some of the projects we've been able to accomplish this year with like the 14th Street, there's no lack of work out there for us. So, it's nice to not add another thing to the plate, potentially. Some cons would be, obviously, there would be a cost increase that would be likely. Possible road closures for efficiency, weather and temperature challenges. Obviously, you can't paint in the rain and you can't paint when it's cold unless you're using cold-weather paint. And then contractor availability. There are not many painting contractors in the entire state. One thing I did is I went on MDOT's, the state's website, for their qualified, pre-qualified contractors for each type of work. You'll get into like pavement markings, excavating, all this stuff. Paving, you know, it's a big, long list. Excavating, big, long list. Painting, it's like six companies. So it's not many. And to get people to come up here from downstate for a $150,000 contract, it's not that enticing sometimes. So we are lucky that we have a contractor that is willing to come up here currently to do the work. And we have had it in the past where we have not had contractors, maybe one, two tops, to bid on the work. So, that, in speaking with other municipalities like Alpena, their pavement markings have not been redone in three years, because nobody would bid on the work. So, their pavement markings are gone, you can't even see them anymore, it's been three years. So they had to make some changes and split the contract into three specific: long lines, legends, and then parking, three separate contracts. Because each one is so specialized, the parking stuff's probably the easiest, the long lines require the most specialized equipment. So they were able to finally get somebody to bid on the work, so they're finally getting their pavement markings put back down after three years. So that, that is one thing to consider.
For how they divided it into three then, so did they have, you know, basically, one of each of the different companies that are out there bid on the different parts of it, or did they?
So they had,
Yeah, sorry.
The one main contractor in state, PK, is doing the long line work. And then a local painting, since striping company like you'd see here, doing like the Grand Travers Mall or whatever, is doing the parking, on-street parking, the legends, and then parking lots. So.
Great, go ahead, Heather.
And why wouldn't we do that here?
We kind of do have, we do have two separate contracts for long lines. But it's also making it enticing enough, making it a big enough contract that would attract companies to come here to do the work. So if you were to remove parking out of it, parking can, you know, makes up about 30...
And give that to one of our local companies instead.
Right, so you might be hard-pressed to find a company that comes up to do the specialized work, like the stencil work for crosswalks and the arrows.
Well, that would be a different one, though.
He's saying you'd have trouble getting them to bid.
Yep, so if you were to split things out, you could take away the attractiveness of the contract to get these contractors to come here and do this. So.
Go ahead, Jackie.
This is wild and crazy, and I'm sure there's good reasons not to, just tell me, tell me, sit down, please. Are there buying cooperatives, you know, like every municipality in northwest lower Michigan could, you know, bid together and get,
Like unionize?
Make, make that contract large enough to be more attractive.
It's possible.
Summer camp for painters.
I mean, it's something we could consider where we work with the county. So in talking with the county, they use PK contracting to do most of their long lines and legends work. In recent years, PK hasn't even bid on our work. So we can't make people bid on it. We have to make it enticing enough that they want to work, do the work. So, you know, maybe that's something we'll see a change. But, like I said before, this is not a situation that's unique to us. Municipalities throughout the state are finding it harder and harder to get people to even bid on the work. And then the costs are going up, up, up every single year.
You were saying the clients banding together and being maybe a more attractive customer?
Just a little shift to power to, you know, by, by making the cooperative contract that is a higher value, you know, it shifts the power balance between the supplier and the...
Potaski, Charlevoix.
Yeah, Potaski, Charlevoix, maybe even over to the east side of the state. I don't know.
Yeah, I'd be, I mean, that's an interesting thought, but I think, versus where we could do that with like purchasing things, now you're asking crews to go place to place, so you're kind of running into if they individualize, too, that was, interesting, interesting.
We do have a large number of markings. So every crosswalk, every bar in a special emphasis or piano key crosswalk, each one is a pay item. So each one requires two passes with the paint applicator. So each one takes time and we have thousands of them. So, you know, that's, and that's part of the reason I reached out to Ann Arbor is because they have that focus on that multimodal, pedestrian-bicycle-friendly type thing. Their contract, which I talked to them and it's all public knowledge, there's this $505,000 a year. And they don't repaint everything every year, because they don't have the factors that we do with the climate, the weather, the snow plowing. So, you know, there's always that to consider is the cost, but... Number two is fully contracted with two phases. We soften that approach a little bit, we say, "Hey, we have this core area that we would like done by July 1st, whatever we designate as priority areas." And then we have a secondary phase where we say, "Okay, all of these areas, like local neighborhoods, crosswalks, stop bars, we get that done." But still at an earlier-than-normal timeline, but just not that hard July 1st. So, I don't have a number to put at this. We would anticipate it would be less of a cost increase, but still a cost increase, because then we're requiring that work to be done, part of it, by that July 1st deadline. In speaking with the contractor, this deadline would be easier to achieve. And it would be, you know, it'd be easier and more enticing for them. So, the pros would be earlier visibility in critical areas. The high pedestrian areas, the downtown, the major streets and thoroughfares and corridors. Reduces workload pressure on the contractor and maintains that single external management model where contractor has a job, they have a contract, they know what to do, they go do it. Cons are that we're still relying on a contractor schedule and requires a careful coordination between the phases. So, that's something that we would work with our asset management. Like currently, we have a dashboard that the contractor uses that has every single marking in there. And then as they complete them, they check them off, so we know the date it was completed, the time they marked it complete. So they would know kind of the areas that they needed to complete each phase. So that's nothing that was too concerning for us, so. Another option would be bring the work in-house, but not having a hard deadline. Give us, you know, the entire season like we currently have to get the work done. The pros would be the full scheduling and quality control. As you guys have seen, some of our crew, most of our crew is, is very capable and they take pride in their work, just like we did on 14th Street. These guys really enjoy their jobs and they, they take pride in what they do and that finished product, being able to see, you know, that crosswalk or whatever painted and it looks good and say, "I did that." It builds internal capacity and flexibility. We would have some training and certification requirements that are available. We currently train through IMSA, don't ask me to say what that acronym means, but through Michigan for our sign technicians. They also offer for like traffic signals, pavement markings, construction work zones, setup stuff. So that is something we try to do annually, is do some of those trainings. But that would be something that we would look to do, is get that certification for at least a few of our crew to have a knowledgeable staff that could train others. The cons would be the high upfront cost and staffing costs, increased ongoing management and maintenance, and then challenges to hire seasonals. So we found, just with our sidewalk snowblower operators, it's becoming increasingly difficult to hire people. We used to try and fill five or six slots and we're lucky if we can get two most winners. And then, even with that, the July 1st deadline is, would be very challenging. So, some of the breakouts for the costs that we had looked into, trucks and trailers, so we had priced out, because we would need trucks to haul the trailers with the equipment and the stencils and the paint and the painting machines on it. We had priced a couple of trucks and trailers, because if we were to be doing that work, we can't be taking vehicles away from crews that are already out other, doing other tasks. And this would be an additional ask, so we would have to have additional vehicles and equipment. $140,000. Painting, equipment, and supplies, this includes your painting machines, your stencils, your paint, your glass beads, whatever else you need, which is still something we would have to figure out, because it would be new for us. Staffing would be full, two full-time employees and potentially two seasonal employees at the chime of about $230,000 a year. And that, that, it's about $470,000, yes.
So the two full-time people, they're not going to be painting anything from November to March. Could they be plowing sidewalks?
Yes. So similar to,
We talked about that.
On stormwater, obviously, you're not going to be doing stormwater maintenance in the winter. Those roles, because it has become increasingly challenging to find seasonal employees, we're able to fill those sidewalk routes with full-time employees. And there's, there's plenty of work to go around, year-round, so.
You feel confident it would be easier to fill two full-time positions that would be plowing sidewalks than to try and get seasonal work to do anything?
Though I will say that depending on your preference, we can also make the seasonal roles more attractive, right? In terms of compensation, so that's always an option, but it has a budgetary impact.
So we see that upfront cost of about $470,000. And then the ongoing costs, so every year, once you've got the equipment and stuff in place, your ongoing costs would be your painting supplies, your paint and beads, your two full-time and two seasonal staff. And that comes out to about $255,000. These are all estimates, just kind of what we've gone with, best knowledge that we've been able to gather from other municipalities and working with the contractor. Now this is the big one, bringing the work in-house with that hard, single deadline of July 1st. So transition all of the pavement markings, legends, crosswalks, and parking, painting to city staff, purchase the necessary equipment, and allocate labor within the Streets Division to meet the July 1st deadline. As I mentioned, in the fully contracted July 1st deadline, they would be dedicating at least an eight-person crew and six days a week, including night work, to be able to accomplish that task in that timeframe with experienced, seasoned painters, where we are brand-new. So, the thing we would have on our side is that we're here, maybe it is 50 degrees in March and we can start painting and we don't have to wait on the contractor. So there's a lot to consider there, but four full-time employees, two seasonals. To make that work, we would basically be painting day and night. We would have two full-time employees on night shift, painting. And that, that is one thing that the contractor does, these high-traffic areas, they paint, like downtown, they'll paint at night. So to minimize the impact on traffic. So two, a crew on night and a crew on day shift. So we'd basically be painting night, day and night. So, and then the, the painting supplies, the $25,000 for paint and beads, totaling about $435,000. That's your annual recurring, you know, every year.
Sorry, I just had a question, because we've got kind of the two extremes here of like, here's what it would look like if we did it in-house without a deadline and then this frankly terrible sounding single deadline to do to a staff. But like, what would the kind of in, in-between, I'll call it, look like if we were to do what we did with the first one and prioritize like the July 1, like, you know, the thing we always get, right, downtown before Cherry Festival, so pedestrians don't really can walk and people. But that maybe the bike lanes on Woodmere don't get done until a little after that. Is that, is there a little bit of a difference in pace than that? Or is that kind of what you were looking at when you said the bring-in-house, but not the strict deadline? Was that kind of that thought of, like, you would still try to prioritize and get some of those major areas done first? It just might not be, you know... It just might not be, you know, maybe the intersection at Ca- the crosswalks at Cass might not be done by July one with that or something?
I think it's a little bit of both, but there is a lot of unknowns. And if, um, one thing we kind of want to stress is that if the contractor's saying it's going to take them eight people to do this in that short window and we're saying six.
Yeah.
I think it's a little bit of a stretch, especially for green people that don't have a whole lot of experience in painting. So I'd be hesitant to pull any staff away from that and then kind of sell ourselves short. Um, I think we had the, the one scenario with the, the, the full year to do the work. And then this, whether it's the July first deadline, maybe some of it extends past, I'm, we're not entirely sure.
Okay.
So we wanted to kind of give both ends of the spectrum.
Great, thank you.
I have a question. I, I didn't think that bike lanes were part of this. I thought that was part of the long line.
Symbols, so symbols within the bike lanes. So there are symbols within the bike lanes.
Yeah.
Um, and then sheroes within the, the actual drive lanes and stuff.
Yeah.
Well, you look at what happened this year where, you know, things didn't get painted until...
A couple of weeks ago.
Weeks ago. Uh, so that means that they're kind of fresh. So it's possible that in the spring, you know, they're not looking so bad. If, if, if we had all of this in-house and, and things were getting done all season, you would find maybe that you, you weren't, uh, it wasn't critical to get certain things done like the, the crosswalks on Cass because you just painted them in August. And so anyway, I, I'm, I'm, this one can go away.
Go ahead.
But I think the one before that is definitely worth considering.
Well, we've got one more, but go ahead.
Yeah, just to, expanding on, on, I think maybe the direction that Commissioner Shaw was going. I started looking, thinking about this in terms of, um, what were the safety priorities?
Well, the hybrid models.
And, and, um, you know, I wondered, it, I, I took a stab at it and said, well, crosswalks, obviously. And, and then maybe legends and then maybe long lines or maybe long lines in number two place? I mean, which, which ones are going to, do you think have the most tangible impact on the, on the safety of the people who are using our paved surfaces?
Is it, is it okay if we have, pause us and do the hybrid model first and address them all together? Yeah, sorry.
Yeah, 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 yeah. Hold that thought.
Yeah, we'll come back to that one and I'll try to remember too.
So just to finish this slide off, some additional considerations would be that we require night work to be able to, to get that deadline met. Two people on days, two people on nights, basically painting day and night. And then it may require an increase in seasonal wage to ensure successful hiring because as I've explained, we do have difficulties getting seasonal staff. And then the hybrid model. So this would be contracting out whatever portion we decide of, of this contract to a company, but doing some of the work, whatever is designated in-house. So and that may be letting the contractor do what they do best, focus on these more technical areas where we paint parking lots or whatever it may be. Um, some of the highlights of this model, um, would be that, uh, it reduces the total contract costs. Um, and there are parts of the contract that I'm sure the contractors, like, I hate doing that. You guys can have it. And then it would also be a smaller investment in equipment and staff because we still have that contractor to rely on for doing a majority of the things. But then we would also have staff to, to help alleviate that burden for the contractor, um, but also get the things done in a timely manner. So, uh, and then staff can assist existing personnel, um, with other tasks as well. So pros would be the flexibility for urgent or small projects. So having that in-house, you know, capacity to, to get on these urgent or small projects, like we have a change. Um, or we say, hey, we really need to get this done for whatever reason. This, this has, dynamic has changed. Uh, a detour or whatever it is, we really need this crosswalk that may not normally be a priority, we need that done ASAP. So it gives that flexibility, um, reduces that contractor dependency and develops the internal skill base. I like, you tell the guys, I, I hope they all want to be like the Swiss Army knife. They want to be able to do it all because then it gives them that varia- variety through their workday where they could do all kinds of different things and it makes them valuable where they can do, you know, so many different things. And then it gives them the option to do different things and give them a break. Um, some of the cons would be requires a clear division, so we're not stepping on each other's toes. So we go paint something that the contractor was expecting to paint, so we need to have a clear separation of those responsibilities. Um, some coordination overhead. Um, you take too much away from the contract, it may not be attractive to a, a company or a bidder to drive up here from downstate. So you have to caution that and balance that, maybe work with the contractor to say, okay, we could take X amount of, up to this amount of it out, work with them to make it attractive because we have seen that there are issues with getting people to bid on it. And then also going back to that, challenges to hiring seasonals and that July first deadline is still challenging, uh, whether it's in-house or contracted. But maybe working together, that'd be something that would be a little bit easier. So some of the costs that we've worked on, um, being that it's a reduced crew size and we're still using a contractor, uh, we, we would just do, need one truck with the trailer, um, or use any existing trailer. The painting equipment could be dubbed down. Maybe we don't need all of the stencils that would be required because the contractor would still do, you know, some of the, the, most of the crosswalks we would focus on other things, so we could reduce some of the equipment and supplies down. One full-time staff, one seasonal, that brings that price tag down, uh, significantly to a hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars. So that initial investment of about two hundred and twenty-five thousand. And then the ongoing costs, the recurring costs year after year, once, uh, we've made that investment in the, uh, materials and equipment is the one full-time and one seasonal staff, the supplies, the paint and the beads, so about a hundred and twenty-seven K. So, um, possible reduction in the contract costs for the contractor because we're taking some of that work off of their plate, investing in our staff and equipment so that we can do some of that work in-house and work together, so...
And then, um, if you want to put the dollar amount up, I think that could be part of the next conversation on your next slide, yeah.
So just as a summary to kind of go and put these scenarios side by side, starting with the fully contracted single deadline, um, you know, we, we know there'd be a cost increase. There's, there's ways to, to get firm numbers and we'll talk about that a little bit here later on. But just from initial input from the contractor we're using currently, an estimate of two hundred and fifty to three hundred thousand dollars with that hard July first deadline. Option two would be the fully contracted, still relying on the contractor, but having two phases. So we have a priority area, whatever we designate as a priority, one being completed prior to July first and then having a secondary deadline for everything else, but still earlier than we've, we've been used to. So there's still stuff that's getting painted. Uh, if the temperatures, uh, would reach sufficient level this week and it wasn't raining, they were planning on coming and painting stuff this week and it's October twentieth, so... Bringing the work in-house. So year one, without that hard deadline, we have that big investment of about four hundred and seventy thousand with staff and equipment. And then the ongoing, uh, recurring costs of about two hundred and fifty-five thousand. Uh, bring the work in-house with a single deadline, so they require in more investment in equipment and staff, uh, six hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars on ongoing about four hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars every single year. The hybrid model would be, uh, year one would be the contractor plus the initial investment in the employees and the equipment. And then after that would be the contractor cost plus about a hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars. And then status quo, don't change anything, which I don't know that people would like, but our current contract is a hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars. It is up at the end of this fiscal year, um, so takeaways. We'll get into kind of what we're thinking towards the end. Completing all pavement markings early in the season remains challenging due to staffing limits, weather conditions and contractor availability. Analysis shows that the in-house option would provide more control and flexibility, but comes with significant staffing and cost increases and cost challenges. Contracted options continue to offer efficiency and simpler management through, uh, though costs are expected to increase. Uh, staff recommends issuing an RFP as soon as possible to obtain, uh, current contractor pricing and feasibility for the most viable model. So we would recommend putting out RFPs with these different scenarios, maybe the, the hybrid model or the hard deadline July first or the two deadlines gets some real numbers and real interest. So do we even have interest from people that are willing to do this work? And then what those hard numbers are. So option one, the fully contracted single deadline, and then option two, the fully contracted with the two phases, the two deadlines. And then we would also recommend issuing an RFP for long line painting, which is a separate contract. But similarly, um, there is no hard deadline, uh, for that as either. So they have the entire fiscal year. Um, they've been pretty good about when you call them and you get that PO entered, they show up and it takes them a day and a half to do the entire city. But they're in a truck moving right along and they can knock out the center lines and edge lines pretty quickly, so...
Now I'm going to, thank you for this, by the way, and I appreciate the summary too at the end. And since we've had very eager input already, I'm going to let Jackie ask her question now since it applies to all the models.
Okay. Um, so I guess my question was about priorities. And, you know, as I think Benjamin said in his, uh, Mr. Marinette said in his introduction that, you know, we have been making a lot of decisions based on, um, cost effectiveness. And, and I wonder if it is worth our time to say, what happens if our top priority is safety? Uh, traffic safety? Or if our top priority is, um, control over the schedule? Or, you know, how, how can we, um, wrap some prioritization around this? And, and, um, my, my suspicion, and I'm not a pro, but is that, is that the safety impact of the long lines may be pretty significant? And, um, so I guess I, I, I'd like to hear some conversation about priorities and, and how we go about making this decision, what we seek.
Yeah, when you were talking, and now I'll kind of break it down slightly. When you were talking about the hybrid model or even the two phases of the, um, the, bringing in the contractor, which I'd be curious about the vi- what we thought the viability of that would be anyways if we already have trouble getting them to come up here in a timely manner or say, come up here really quickly and then come back again later while you're probably doing half the state. Um, but to that end of, you know, where, where, where'd we be looking at these as, you know, when, when you're thinking of those or when you had the in-staff discussions, we have our own thoughts. Where were you thinking of like, okay, if we're not doing it all in one fell swoop, what were the high priorities? Were they the long lines and, you know, crosswalks at major intersections? Were they long lines and bike lanes, but in certain areas? Kind of how were you all looking at that?
I think it could be a couple of different factors. Location, one. Two is what type, maybe it's this type of pavement marking gets done first, whether it's crosswalks or we focus on the areas with the most pedestrian or bicycle activity. Um, and then to, to go towards like the safety thing, having these, these markings completed earlier in the season prior to the influx of tourists when the most amount of people here and they're, don't recognize, they're not used to the streets, they don't know where they're going, they're trying to figure out where to park. You know, you have all those other distractions. Having those markings done prior to that so that they're good and fresh during our peak tourist season, I think that, you know, really goes towards safety. It, it would be something we'd have to discuss, uh, whether it's an area or a certain type of marking. We will work together collaboratively through, you know, all the different departments and divisions to say, okay, what do we value or what do we think needs to be done? Or, and we could always make changes to that. So maybe, you know, we could always adapt from year to year. We could change that, have a, a, something in the contract where we can make changes, you know. It's not a set number, which we usually do have in our contracts that we can add or subtract a certain number of the markings or costs. But I think it's something we just have to, to, to learn. We designate an area, maybe then, you know, the next year priorities change, whether it's a detour on the parkway or whatever it is. So I think it's going to be something that's fluid. It's not going to be a set priority area.
Sure. Uh, Heather?
Um, so you're suggesting that no matter what we end up with, that we, uh, get a couple of RFPs out for the single deadline and the two phases? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, so it gives us some numbers, right? Because then it helps with the whole decision on do we bring it in-house.
And do you, do you even know if it's possible to buy one of these pa- these legend machines and like get it delivered next year?
Yeah, I've actually reached out to a couple of companies that we do business with, um, and I have quotes, uh, current pricing.
And they can deliver by next year? We don't have to wait two years like we do for other things?
Yeah, the one representative is, is local. He said that he would deliver them himself, so...
Okay.
Um, we do have that. I've reached out, I've got pricing for commercial grade painting. I've called, we, like I said, we spoke to municipalities throughout the entire state. What are you using? You know, what kind of painter you using? What machinery are you using? What rate are you applicating at? How often are you painting? How long are they lasting? Um, so we have a pretty good idea of what works and that's the equipment that we priced.
Okay, I just have one more question, which is kind of off over here. DDA Board Chair, Ed Soski wrote about the, uh, bike lines being painted green and that that's a standard and then MDOT is, is actually accepted that as a standard. Does that help at all with safety and maybe makes those bike legends less of a...
Good question.
Have to have those in immediately? That green is going to alert everybody that it's a bike lane? And that would be the, something that the long line painters would do, right?
Uh, depends on if it's the line or if it's the symbol itself. So, uh, for example, Woodmere, if you're heading north as you approach Eighth Street, they have what's called a bike box. So they actually have a green section, a bike box at the intersection because the bike lanes between a couple of lanes of travel. So maybe that's what it is. But we always want to evaluate our pavement markings to make sure we're complying to, uh, MMUTCD standards. So we make sure we're following standards. And looking at like what MDOT's doing, they've done some changes, like they're no longer doing the crosswalks. Like currently we do a two-foot wide special emphasis bar. If you drive, uh, Division thirty-one, they've changed theirs where it's a one-foot bar with a two-foot space. So it, it's something they've changed. Um, one other thing that the painter and other municipalities have said, we paint the word "only" between our arrows. We are one of the few municipalities in the state that are still doing that. And they say, you want to cut down on time and costs and reduce the amount of paint you're using? Get rid of "only" because you're one of the few that are still doing it and it's not required.
So we could actually standardize our markings. We could be using the same markings that MDOT uses.
And it's something we are evaluating with the engineering department. We actually have been meeting to discuss having standard markings. So what, the city as a body, this is the way we paint. It's compliant with MMUTCD. And that way we know on every project it's getting painted the same. So when a different contractor does it and they do it the way that they normally do it, we have a standard for the city. This is the way we do it so that it's uniform throughout the entire city and we don't have any confusion.
Because some of our crosswalks are just two bars and some of them are the, the many...
Yeah.
But I did want to clarify something that Commissioner Shaw just said, though, that, that could be done whether we do it in-house or if we have a contractor, tell them we want to standardize it. It is not only if we do it in-house. Not against in-house at all, but just making that point. Tim, you had your, I was gonna say, it looked like you were starting to put your hand up before.
And I'll, I had a few things here and I'll start with that one, the in-house and such. And the note I made to myself previously, based on what you were saying, is that to me, a value of bringing it in-house is the continuous improvement. So as the workers are putting down, whether it's a symbol or this or that, one year to the next, they can say, why are we doing it this way? Maybe it needs to be something, whatever it is, something different. Whereas when we outsource it, nobody's questioning, like we've got that big book of painting and it just gets done. And it's going to be that way forever. So to me, there's great benefit having it in-house because things, there's eyes on it every year. And then, uh, question I had is, we have LCP, so Legends Crosswalk Parking. Ballpark idea, how much is parking? Whether it's co- whether you want to do it in cost or percentage?
Uh, we were able to sit down prior to this meeting and kind of look at historically, um, what we have every year in our, on our purchase order. So I, you know, I manage the entire contract for the entire city. Um, so we've got major and local streets. Then we have on-street parking, the Hardy Deck, the Old Town Deck, the Marina Parks, parking lots and the garage or DPS building. Parking related, it's about thirty-one and a half percent of the entire contract or forty-six thousand nine hundred and fifty-four dollars and forty-seven cents. But if we want to look at just parking fund related, um, and there's kind of a trigger there with whether or not parking is paid for, that's about twenty-six and a half percent of the entire contract or thirty-nine thousand five hundred dollars.
Thanks, yeah. So I'll just round it off to thirty percent. Because there's both the advantage of that's shouldn't be a high priority. So as far as cost, but also close to thirty percent because... So as far as cost, but also, close to thirty percent, because some of these numbers start to get a little eye-popping. But if that money is coming from parking revenue, hopefully, when this gets looked at, again, because it'll be looked at more times, we could also have it presented in a way that, and this much would be parking. So it's not just general fund money.
Mm-hmm.
It, it's still, you know, decent money, but as far as, some of it will be covered. So both the, the priority, as well as the cost. And then, along those lines, as far as cost, whether it's cost or number, do you have a rough sense of the piano key crosswalks versus the two-line crosswalks?
Would it cost each?
Well, yeah, for one piano key crosswalk versus one?
Um, so.
Kind of ballpark. Oh.
Yeah.
We're getting a demo. We love a demo from Chris.
Yeah, you don't have to look it up.
I've got all the previous.
It's all right.
There's, there's two types of crosswalks. There's the standard crosswalk, which are just the two parallel bars. It's either a four or six-inch line, and that's per foot price.
Right. So where I was going with it, it was more just like the effort and the time it takes. Because if we find that, wow, the piano keys both cost so much more, and they take so much more time, well then, what are some of the creative ways, again with staff looking at it, that we could try to eliminate some of those piano key crosswalks and change them to two lines, still have it just as safe? So I'm not trying to answer it tonight, but just, it's an opportunity. Like how could we squeeze things here and there?
And it's something we've looked at. I did ask the contractor, what takes you the most time?
Right.
And it's the special emphasis of the piano key, because the gun spray machine sprays a twelve-inch wide swath. So a twenty-four-inch pad requires two trips down and back. And we have crosswalks where the pads are five-foot in length, you know, they're two feet wide, five-foot long. We have some that go all the way up to twelve-plus feet at, like, MDOT intersections. So there's really no standard, and there, those are bid per pad based on the length of it. Whereas the two parallel crosswalk bars are just a price per foot. And that's something like we've talked about with engineering. There are standards to say, like, when is a special emphasis suitable, and when is, when are parallel bars? And one factor of that is, is it a stop-controlled intersection, or a stop-controlled leg of the intersection? So if there's a stop sign, you have a stop bar, two parallel lines for a crosswalk are sufficient. But if you have a street where that flow of traffic is not stop-controlled, that's where a special emphasis is more suitable, or in the, you know, the word "special" kind of says it. So areas of high pedestrian traffic, high vehicular traffic, whether it's a trail crossing, or whatever. And there, there are thresholds based on pedestrian counts and vehicular traffic counts, you know. So it's something we could look at. But the painter did say, you want to cut my time in half, go to one-foot crosswalk bars. That's what MDOT's doing. It would be so much simpler for us, and we would be uniform. Like, when MDOT did the Parkway last year, they kept the markings at two-foot to be concurrent, to match what we're doing. So within the city, they're all the same, a two-foot bar. But as soon as you leave the city, for example, I bring Division 31 in, they're at one foot now, when they just redid those intersection improvements with the traffic signals that like cross, not crossing circle, but like the entrance to Lowe's, and then down by Meyer.
Mm-hmm.
They're a one-foot pad, rather than a two-foot pad. So.
Thank you.
And I had a couple, I guess we're kind of into discussion slash questions. So, one of the things that I was noticing, and I guess I'm curious about, obviously, the long lines, it sounds like, are going to be the biggest challenge if we were to bring everything in-house. But I'm curious about, I'm glad you guys mentioned the RFP process, because I think we're up here kind of imagining what we could do. But I'm also curious, to your point that you've raised several times, and I appreciate it, who's actually going to be interested or want to do it at the end of the day? And so for me, reading these over, you know, the, the full contract, single deadline, or the hybrid, seems to be the most viable right now. And I guess my question would be, if we did the hybrid, we're investing in a new truck, we're investing in a couple of employees, as we get used to it, as we start getting the hang of it, that, in theory, could be a decision in the future to fully expand it more and more. Is that something that kind of everybody's kind of thinking as well, of let's figure out? Is there a little bit of, I guess, a pulse of the staff, without holding you accountable for everyone's single opinion, that that is something that could be viable and helpful for you all to kind of get your foot in, but not be totally in control of it?
It, it's something we've discussed. And like I said, the crew likes that variety. So something else to do, where, you know, they're not shoveling hot asphalt, they could be running a paint machine, you know. They like that variety. So it's something we have discussed. And we could evaluate it, because our contracts are typically a one-year contract with the option of two additional one-year renewals. After a couple of years, we could say, hey, we got the hang of this, this is a breeze, and we could try it. Talking with other municipalities and our contractor, the one thing that was made clear is, you aren't the first municipality to look into this, and you aren't, you aren't going to be the last. And if you were to do it, take it in-house, you wouldn't be the first to do it, and you wouldn't be the first to fail. Because there have been other municipalities that have done it, and it just is way too much work, and they end up contracting it back out.
Yeah, excellent. And the other question I had too, and you brought up that the county uses a service that doesn't even bid on ours anymore. But Jackie raised an interesting point of checking out other municipalities. I would think, just based on the limited number, we have almost like a cartel situation here, where it's not a monopoly, but there's only so many, and they kind of, at the end of the day, there's a couple that are going to say yes or no to us. But if it was this hybrid model, where, like potentially, we asked the county's people, because I think it'd be probably hard for us to be like, oh, come to us, and then go to Potaski. It's not as easy as we're all ordering the same piece of equipment and getting a large bulk discount rate or something on it. But do we have an idea of approximately when they come and service the county? You know, if it is, or is that a question was asked, or the county just doesn't know of, you know, yeah, they tend to usually be done with the major stuff by June or something?
And, and it's not, I, I don't know for a fact that they even repaint all of their pavement markings every year.
I don't think they do, but yeah.
So, one thing in talking with some of our, you know, colleagues at the county, one thing they did a couple of years ago, you guys may recall, on South Airport Road, where they had the road shut down middle of the day, they were recessing pavement markings. So they'd come in with a machine, grind just a little bit of the surface of the road off, so that the pavement marking sits just below the surface. And in theory, that'll make it last longer, because during the winter, the plow blades aren't scraping across it and removing it. I mean, the paint may only be a couple mils thick, but it's that much higher than the surface of the road. So that's something that they did do. And we'll kind of see how, if that does, you know, make the markings last longer. It's something we've looked into with long lines, maybe requiring that on all new projects, we recess the long line pavement markings. Maybe it'll make, make them last longer. Or we look into maybe transitioning towards recessing certain markings to get them to last longer. The one thing I did, you know, talk with a lot of these municipalities is, how long are these lasting, or how often? The general consensus is, if you're using waterborne paint, you have to repaint every single year.
Mm-hmm.
It may not be everything. Maybe you've got local streets that don't see the traffic, or whatever. But the, the general consensus is, they're repainting their pavement markings every single year.
And that's an interesting, that was another question that I had, because, you know, parking spots being part of this, I mean, I, I feel, feel like, and this is, everything we were talking about is somewhat anecdotal, because that's what I'm kind of asking, is if this is, if we did a hybrid, or we didn't jump full in, is this something we could also collect? Is, obviously, as been mentioned, where are we prioritizing? Parking spots aren't a huge priority compared to people knowing where they're safe to bike, and safe to drive, and which way traffic direction is. And so I'm curious about that with our own, and I don't want to, I don't need an answer today, but with our own, you know, it feels like parking spots on Front Street don't suddenly disappear come March, when we resurface, the way that stripes do sometimes, or crosswalks do. And I'm sure that has to do with the plowing and other things. But, so that's something I'm curious about, too, as we go through some of these numbers, and as further conversations happen of, you know, how, are we repainting our parking lot, our parking spots every year, and should we be? Things like that. So I'm just throwing that out there, something to keep an eye on as we go through this next season, and something I'd be curious to know about.
And everything, so long lines and Legends, crosswalks and parking, everything gets repainted every single year.
Yeah.
Here. So.
Yeah. Go ahead.
Yeah, just one more time. To be clear, we are, the things that we're talking about bringing in, into house are not long lines.
Right.
Correct.
So the hybrid model in, could be that the city paints the Legends and the crosswalks, and special stuff on the street, and contracts out all the parking. That could be the hybrid model, right?
Yeah, it could be.
And one more thing, water paint. Water, what do you call it?
Waterborne.
Waterborne. Yep. More, we need, we do not need to put more plastic in, on this earth, so I'm not.
So there are other options.
As I was gonna say.
There's all kinds of different things. I mean, you mentioned plastics and stuff. There's thermoplastics, there's different types of paint. One trial we did last year in conjunction with the engineering department is MMA, which is supposed, it was touted as a more green, ecological-friendly. It's got lower VOCs than waterborne paint. It actually registers as non-detectable in that range, but it's four times the cost.
Mm-hmm.
And, but they say it could last up to four times as long. So we partnered with the engineering, they actually kind of spearheaded it, but worked with them to identify a couple of local crosswalks, where we did this treatment on, you know, asphalt that never had a pavement marking on it, so we can truly see, does it last any longer? So we're evaluating that. That was done last year. We've got one winner under our belt, so we're kind of seeing how it wears versus the very next intersection. And we're taking note of it, taking pictures, and kind of seeing how it compares. So it's too early to make.
And I owe engineering department.
Yep.
Yes.
Yeah.
All right. Okay. I'll just, go ahead.
One last, because we're talking about hybrids. I suppose another approach to hybridizing might be, we own the equipment and hire crews who, you know, want to come up and work in northern Michigan in the summertime. Is, I'm trying to think of what the limiting factors are. You know, is the limiting factor the equipment, or the people? More, more so?
Well, I mean, anybody can buy the equipment, but I don't really know how that would work with city-owned equipment, and then non-city employees using it, liability-type things.
Good point.
Like it's into the seasonal worker situation you're talking about.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah. So I'm going to just say, if anybody has a last comment, this is obviously going to be brought back again to a new, the next commission, but also probably not just one more conversation. So I think this was a really great overview. Thank you for that, Chris. And I think it's allowing us all to come on the same page. I think these conversations have been had in piecemeal here and there, ideas have been thrown out. So I appreciate you all coming together and summarizing it, and presenting it, so that everybody, not just on the commission, but at home, taxpayers, kind of know where we're coming from, all these. So I thank you very much for joining us tonight. And I hesitate, because it is of the hour, but I know that there's a few groups who that might be here just for this. I will allow a brief, two-minute public comment on this one, if anybody wants to. I see one of the people left, though, actually, so maybe they don't. So, all right. Well, then we won't have public comment on this. And we will now move on to another excellent work by another ad hoc that's been working on a policy, and the Complete Streets. And I will let you take it away, Commissioner Warner.
Sure. And tonight is just meant as an introduction. We were modeling that after, actually, the ethics policy, I think, where it was brought forward, so everybody had a chance to, not to see it tonight, but take it, add comments, provide them to staff, as well as the public who might want to comment. And then it will come back November, December, to the next commission for possible action. So not really anything intended to discuss tonight. It's there. I mean, if somebody did have specific questions, happy to try to answer them, but it was more just to introduce it.
Mm-hmm. Exciting to see it here. Did anybody else from the committee want to make any comments, or? Go ahead.
I will make a comment. Who comments?
Allowed.
One, one is, I think that the use of the one percent from the general funds for Complete Streets is unclear. Who gets to use that, and where? Because what you said at our final ad hoc was that it was up to the advisory committee how to spend that, but that's not.
Well, recommendations.
Right.
Yeah, recommendations, yes. But that's not at all clear in here. But what I really want to talk about is that, an email, email we got early this morning from Mark, I don't remember his last name now.
From Junior's Tires.
From Junior Tires, who was really confused, because he was looking at Safe Street Alliance's website. Somebody had sent him a link, and thought that that was the Complete Streets policy. And he said, oh my gosh, you're taking, you're going to shut my business down, because you're going to put bike lanes on half the street. So I know that the last ad hoc we had, we talked a lot about one single line that was in here, about design. And where is that? I know that there's a note. It's in Section Nine, and it says, not to advise on technical, technical design. And we, Tim and I, I don't think.
Yeah, Mark was not able to attend.
We really wanted that to come out, because we wanted
Yeah, that's right. Yes.
To get as much information as we possibly could from the people who are living on, in these neighborhoods and using these streets. But that, what happened this morning was absolutely something that should not happen. We shouldn't have this confusion about what non-city people are thinking about how to design an intersection, or a corridor, and what's happening at the city. It was kind of a mess. And I was on the phone for about forty-five minutes with Mr. Junior Tires. So just be careful out there with your Complete Streets. We really appreciate always the, your thoughts and comments, but be careful.
Mm-hmm. Good point. Other final thoughts, or things that staff can take back at this point? Go ahead, Jackie.
Well, just a few comments to think about as you, as you make progress on the Complete Streets ad hoc, and before it comes back. I, I would, I would really like to understand more about how you are measuring some of these outcomes, how you're intending to measure. You know, we talk about minimum safety standards, and it, it, by the time I got to the description of the, the advisory committee, it seemed like it was kind of being put to them to discover the, the success metrics, you know.
It partly is. So that, that's not incorrect, and not just in what you're describing there, but there were many topics in there, where, we had excellent discussions between members of the ad hoc, and staff, and members of the public that attended, that we were not try, we were deliberately trying to not have the policy be prescriptive, but leave it up to a body to be advisory. So it is strictly making recommendations to this city manager, and through the city manager to the city commission. But to push the heavy lifting, if you will, off, because there's a lot that needs to be figured out and learned and decided.
And, and that, in my mind, places extra pressure on the credentialing of the members of that advisory group.
Absolutely.
And that we be really thoughtful about that. The other thing, as, public transit, it, it seems like such an integral part of, of our commitment to multimodal transportation. And this is quite focused on walking and rolling, and, you know, bicycling, and it, I don't know how we, how we bring that piece into this. But, but to talk about Complete Streets without addressing the need for public transit, or a policy toward public transit in some way, it seems like a gap to me.
Possibly. I mean, we do have it under performance measure as ridership of local transit agencies.
Right.
And again, the policy's not trying to tell beta what to do to increase opportunities, but we want the street to be able to accommodate the bus of whatever size. And maybe it's not just a bus, but I'll use that generically.
And I, I, I find ridership to be kind of a limited success metric, because, you know, do you want to measure frequency? Do you want to measure reliability? Do you, you know, it's not just the bodies on the bus, that, you know, with, if other measurements improved, would ridership travel along?
But that's the measure still, is ridership. I mean, we don't need to figure out, I'm having you talk offline with you.
Yeah, you're right.
But again, to leave it up to beta, to say, is frequency needed, or more stops needed?
Yeah.
That's not.
Well, and I think that that, you just hit on a good point, Commissioner Warner, that this is the first of many discussions. And so that can also be hashed out by a full, full commissions, probably several times going forward. And so that can also be hashed out by a full, full commissions, probably several times going forward.
Just introduction.
Yeah. So did you, did you have another point? Sorry, I saw you going over your notes.
No, no, that's fine.
The one thing I was going to say too, that I have a thought on, and it's just initial. And so, you know, we'll everywhere, see where everything goes, is that concern that you have for the credentialing of the ad hoc. I, that to me was where I had a thought and I haven't, it's not fully baked because there's more discussion to come. Of that's not, I don't think that the, I'm, I'm not sure where I feel about the board or the advisory board to the city manager and then directly back to the city commission. I'd like to see there be, like we have a legal check, a standards check by the engineers or others along the process, no matter what the credential of the, of the advisory committee is because they are advisory. That's for discussion later. That might be only me thinking that, but I just wanted to throw that out there. So that's a note that's made.
Well, we are waiting on a flow chart.
Right, waiting on a flow chart. And we discussed that quite a bit as far as the intent is staff will be in attendance at all of the meetings, not just to attend, but to participate.
Well, and, and that is, I guess that would be where I would just put a little bit of a change in my definition of they should be there to, they should be part of that and it should be a conversation. But at the end of the day, who's guaranteeing and doing what is our staff and our credentialed employees for our, our city? So I would like to see, again, like a legal check on it being the, they're there, but they are also not there facing a, a panel or they have a little bit of extra time to breathe with something and it's not just on the spot. It was voted and now that's automatically taken. That's a two-second thought.
It's a five, three board.
Yes.
And I can assure you, and I appreciate your point, Mayor, that that'll be part of the recommendation that comes from the city manager that has to include the staff perspective.
Well, and I would just say that's where I appreciate the comment that there's a flow chart coming too. I think, I love flow charts. They help me understand things even more. So I appreciate that. I think that's great. Okay, so anything else on this? I'm going to, oh, go ahead, Jackie.
I'm sorry. I did find one more note. Just if, if we can be sure that we're all very satisfied with the level to which we're addressing the needs of the differently abled in, in our, in our safe Complete Streets planning. You know, to, to be very intentional and specific.
We are. We had quite a few discussions about that and it, it's kind of buried in here, but during construction of any sort, and that happened only just recently. It wasn't city construction, but with gas lines in the adjacent neighborhood. So many sidewalks chunks were missing and it was sand, which is fine for most of us up here, but not for all abilities. And so to be able to address those sorts of things that can be overlooked otherwise.
Okay. Was anybody interested in making public comment on this item? I thought so. I misjudged what you were here for. I'm going to give two minutes for this. We'll have, still have a general public comment at the end too, because we do have more to go.
Hi there. Good evening. Rick Venner from the Cherry Capital Cycling Club. I'm also a member of the Grand Traverse State Streets Alliance. I really appreciate Chris's first slide of Carver Street with the newly buffered bike lanes on it. That was nice to see. We followed the, or we had a number of the community members follow along with the ad hoc committee, including myself. I was at every meeting but the first one. And I, we watched it progress. It has some teeth in it. We're happy with it. I think they did a great job. I don't think it needs to be redone. I'd like to win. We've got two potential future commissioners here and four out of five people here are going to be voting on it in the next session. I would just love to see you take a good hard look at it because it's, it's not, I don't think it binds anybody, but it does have some actionable wordage in it, which I think is necessary to get, actually get, see things happen. So just to encourage it. One real quick note on our website with the Safe Streets Alliance. We have 25 different, I think 12 different actual slides in there. Those are not prescriptive. Those are just ideas. Those are up for discussion. It's been on there for a year, so it finally came up with one of them, but that's for discussion. And it's not, it's not something that we're saying that has to be done. It's to start the conversation. So if we need to review how we're doing that or communicate it differently, we're certainly open to that. Anyhow, thank you very much for everything you guys did, the head hot committee and what you guys are going to do for the future for our safe streets, most of all. So thank you.
Any other public comment on this item? Seeing none, I'm going to give us a three-minute recess. I see someone taking furious notes who might need some signatures and maybe some bathrooms. I've seen some hands up. So if anybody needs signatures, come up and get them from us. If anybody needs to use restrooms or water or anything else, please feel free. We're home stretch. All right, we're going to call the meeting back to order because it is late and we have a few other things to get through. So let's get back in action here. So with that, we'll start with our next item of business, which is the TCLP 1 million interlo, interloan fund. This is kind of our revolving fund. So I don't know if you want to hit, get that or we'll just hand over to Carla?
I'll just say real quick that, you know, we've enjoyed. I think it's safe to say that the city's enjoyed supporting Traverse City Light and Power and their great work with a smart grid project. And with that, this is really a renewal. It's not a new loan. It's a renewal. And I'll just turn it over to Carla. Thank you.
Thank you. So we start out every presentation with our mission and vision to ensure that we're adhering to why we exist and where we were going. So you can see in there, sustainable energy and telecom, which is all impacted by the smart grid. Just as a quick refresher, this is a map of where the smart grid is being constructed. We'll be enabling TCLP fiber connectivity to 73% of our customer rate base. And just a friendly reminder, this is a dual-purpose investment. So it does benefit the electric utility as a smart grid and the fiber fund as a lit fiber for our customers for internet. Just a quick expansion update. We remain on schedule for June 30th, 2026. We do have a stretch goal of fall 2025. We do remain on above budget. We did leverage a public procurement opportunity after the financing was approved and we had significant cost savings. Because of this, the general obligation bond is projected to cover most of the project. So our past funding strategy was a combination of general municipal bonds and USDA financing. Our current funding strategy changed to a general obligation municipal bond and interfund loan. With the interfund loan being a term of 10 years, interest rate of a 10-year treasury rate, amount up to 1 million, and then a no prepayment penalty. Our current project is under a 10% contingency and a 25% take rate. So if we go above and beyond that, that's when the $1 million would come into play. So the benefits of financing with the city. While federal funds are an important resource, they often come with extensive compliance requirements and rules. Using local funds would still require accountability, but provide us greater flexibility and efficiency in implementation. It also provides interest earnings going back to the community. If we were to do the full 1 million, it'd be approximately $240,000 back to the city instead of to the, potentially the federal government. And also the investment supports and advances both the city and TCLP strategic goals. Some benefits of the smart grid project, it will attract businesses to the city. We have local control as to the pricing and services that we provide. It will increase the city fee, which you guys can reinvest into the community with infrastructure or new programs. As I mentioned before, it's a dual-purpose asset for the utility and it can enable City Traverse City to move forward with some smart city initiatives. So be happy to answer any questions.
Do we have any questions on this? Or I would take a motion too.
I move that the mayor and interim city clerk be authorized to execute a letter of agreement in an amount not to exceed $1 million as an interfund loan, not load, from the Economic Development Fund with a term of 10 years, an interest rate based on the 10-year US treasury rate. Such contract subject as to its substance by the interim city manager and it's formed by the city attorney.
Support.
Thank you for that, Commissioner Stradwell and Anderson. Any other comments from the commission? Just want to say that I am extremely excited to see this continued move forward after all the years of, of having worked on it. But I also know that these are big undertakings and a lot of players and pieces in play. So Carla, always an excellent, efficient presentation and thank you for that.
Yeah, thank you very much.
And any public comment on this item? Seeing none, I'll bring it back. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you all for that. Looking forward to the continued smart grid and all the great investments we're getting from TCLP on that. And with that, we're also going to keep the TCLP show rolling.
Yes, we are.
With our discussion of our electric fleet, basically, but hybrid included in that. So I'll hand it over to you, Benjamin.
Thank you. Yeah, so I'll, I'll just share.
Capiveras.
I can't compete with that. This is great. Leave it on there, Sarah. This is good. Drive up the energy. So next on your agenda is a recommendation from me for the city commission to approve the purchase of four hybrid police patrol vehicles. That purchase was originally slated for an agenda a little over a month ago. I had an in-depth converse, number of conversations with the employee team and I'll talk a little bit about that under the next agenda item. But as we dove into that conversation, it became very clear to me that rather than looking at vehicles, the purchase of vehicles, vehicle by vehicle, that we needed to have a citywide fleet strategy for electrifying our vehicle fleet and reducing our carbon footprint. And so Ms. Ekran, the executive director of Traverse City Light and Power, and I had some great conversations. And she and Tony Chartran from her team joined the, some of the key members of the employee team that are involved in vehicle purchases. And Ms. Ekran's going to talk about her and her team's willingness to assist the city on that journey as we need to lean on them as we work to advance in this area. So thank you for being here, Brandy, and for sticking it out with us.
Thank, thank you for having me. Skipping to the punchline, we're here to support. But I, one, I really do appreciate having the opportunity to talk with you about our fleet. I'm going to say modernization journey. Obviously electrification is something that's obviously near and dear to our heart being the electric utility. But I do want to talk a bit about how we have been approaching fleet modernization at TCLP. It just seemed like it was a really excellent opportunity just to give you an update as we move forward into how we could potentially maybe support you in the future. But over the past few years, TCLP has been really working to really cornerstone one, I would say, strategic foundation. And it's really now represented in our mission and our vision and our six strategic priorities. And then of those six strategic priorities, one is environmental sustainability that continues to lead or really offer responsibility as well as opportunity for us. And so if you're kind of following my, my mind train here, if you're underneath the environmental sustainability umbrella, there are a number of strategic objectives, one of which deals with our climate action plan, what type of energy we're providing to our customers and programs. Another deals with things that allows us to go a bit beyond what energy traditionally means for us. And then the last one is really decarbonize, decarbonize operations. And this is in essence, more than just what type of energy we're providing our customers, but it's how we're providing the energy, how we're showing up. And an integral part of that deals with, quite frankly, how we're modernizing our fleet. You know, you can't provide energy unless you have trucks to roll. You've got cars to be able to get things out. And then also looking in terms of other equipment use, not just necessarily those trucks, but you know, heavy lifting equipment, things like that. And so over the past year or so, the team has really been focused on, I would say, identifying what we would see is what are the behaviors that needs to be addressed when it comes to fleet utilization? Meaning how, how, how are drives going? How are we leveraging our technology to look at routes? Is there, looking at idling? And then are there some vehicles that we can transition to be less emissions? Meaning going away from combustion engines and being more electric that don't have as much of an impact in terms of how we're operating as, which includes affordability as well as safety? And so I would say there's some really quick wins, you know? So in essence, what we're doing is we're bucketing, what are those quick wins? And then what are those interim steps? What are some things that are impacting the life cycle of our assets? Because clearly there's, you know, we're obviously focused on the, the dollar at the end of the day too. However, we want to be able to still start making some incremental progress. And that would be like the, the middle piece. And then we had, we know that on this journey, especially as we're moving more towards electrification, the larger items in terms of like heavy bucket trucks, things like that, they are not going to necessarily provide the immediate value that we're looking to get. And so are there some hybrid options? So one of the things that I think you approved on the consent agenda was actually, it was still an internal combustion engine, but is there a way to take advantage of allowing not all of its functions to be heavily relying on the internal combustion engine? Is there some hype? And I'm going to, I'm going to use the word hybrid, but it is hybrid. It's a hybrid operation. And so as we're kind of moving in that direction, the idea is to start not only measuring what we're buying, but what is the actual impact? So I say decarbonization, it's really emissions-driven. And ideally, we want to be able to put a value on how we're making some incremental progress. Because while we can't electrify everything at the same time, we know that we can make some, you know, some progress that allows us to study how the infrastructure is working, making certain that we're charging our own experience that our customers are going through. But also being able to allow, I would say, the industry to catch up for our larger heavy-duty vehicles. Those are the ones that we have that are really, that we're probably the most, the most anxious about in terms of how they're moving along. At the end of the day, we're still sticking with TCLP's goal of, I would say, buyer before 2040. And it's what buyer before 2040, like right now, our renewable energy portfolio goal is 100% renewable. Buyer before 2040. And so we're kind of using that 2040 as a maximum, but we're setting, trying to set some interim goals. some interim goals in terms of, you know, we'd like to have low fleet electrified, you know, probably definitely shorter than that, I mean, like maybe within like the next 10 years or so at the absolute latest. And so we're trying to like set those standards that will allow us to measure success, keep us moving forward with some steady momentum, but yet, again, giving industry an opportunity to catch up. What I do envision, because, you know, we're working on our modernization fleet strategy, but we're also working on our own internal operations as far as the sustainability framework. I love to be able to have perfected what that approach looks like or get a little bit close, and then be able to give you a proposal in the future in terms of how can we support you. And in essence, we're trying to learn, and as we're learning, we can lead by example with our customers, and we're going to go through the barriers, we're going to go through the hoops. But my thought is, is if I'm asking my customers to electrify and take my product, I need to go through that experience as well. I need a little bit more time to go through the, what you call it, the hurdles. So that's really the only thing I really had to share this evening. I was, I was going to have like some stories that I was going to share and ask you if you saw the movie, Everything All at Once, but it's past my bedtime.
Do we have any questions for Brandy about what she's laid out? Go ahead.
No question, but just a comment and, and thank you. I see this and earlier on the agenda, there was a collaborative approach between Light and Power and the Parks Department, and I love seeing this kind of breaking down of silos and sharing of expertise because we are better and stronger and more effective when we do. So, thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
And I will say that, yes, hear, hear. I will say, too, that, and this came up to me, and I appreciate it because this is really kind of what, I feel like came up also during some of our conversations about the strategic plan, that you all are kind of doing what we had a conversation about, what maybe the city needs to talk about doing is kind of having that underlying foundation. So when something comes, where is that coming from? From a sustainability standpoint, you don't have to ask every single time, you know, to a point, does it have microplastics? Does it do this? And I think while you kind of offering up that you're going through it first, I look forward to that partnership with, the partnership between TCLP and the city, I think, you know, we don't have to hire out experts for everything. It can be just coming from the experts within, which I do consider TCLP and your staff to be that for us. Now, it might be, you know, the future commissions might want to make that more robust, but I think this partnership and what you're proposing here with the vehicle, the fleet already is more along the lines of what I think we're all, what was coming out of that initial conversations about the strategic plan. So thank you for that.
I appreciate that feedback. As Mr. Mayor and Ted and I were talking about a couple of months ago about this topic, you know, I know that that was something that you were thinking about engaging or considering, and my thought is, is well, you know, let's take care of some low-hanging fruit, and then if we get to that point, then maybe it's a little bit more surgical.
Yeah.
But I believe that there's some excellent opportunities we can, we can work on and learn from our experiences right now that just gets us a little bit further.
Excellent. Any other? Well, thank you so much for that presentation and for staying up past your bedtime to present with us. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
We will release you to your slumbers if needs be or just hang out for a couple more minutes here.
Okay.
So with that, and as was mentioned, I'll move us on to our next agenda item, which is the purchase of four hybrid police interceptors. And so I'll let you lead with that, Benjamin.
Yes, I believe we have 14 hybrid vehicles within our police patrol fleet at this point in time. This item was on the, slated to be on an agenda a little over a month ago. I did have extensive conversations with Joel Tapio, Chief Richmond, a number of folks from the leadership team to really emphasize the importance that we have placed on electrifying our fleet and buying fully-electric vehicles wherever it makes sense. And it is my true opinion, after digging into this, that hybrid vehicles for police patrol make sense, and I'll say a few reasons as to why. One is that these vehicles, the vehicles that we have, need to be available and able to go any number of distance that we might need to travel. And you might think of the city limits as being relatively small, and why does that matter? It adds up quickly. I will say that Northern Michigan is different than even parts downstate. I'll acknowledge that East Lansing has some fully-electric police patrol vehicles, but they don't have the same footprint for mutual aid that Traverse City does. It's also colder here. We talked through battery capacities and those types of things. The fully-electric police patrol vehicles that are available right now are smaller internally, meaning that they don't hold as much. And frankly, I genuinely believe that we need to look at electrifying our fleet from a strategic, through a strategic lens and citywide lens. And so that's why I'm recommending that the city commission approve this purchase order for four hybrid police patrol cars. I'd be happy to elaborate further. Answer any questions. Our police chief is here, as well as Joel Tapio, who's the head of our fleet operation, and that's it for me at this point.
Do we have questions or a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
That the interim city manager be authorized to issue a purchase order to Lunghammer Ford, four Ford hybrid interceptors in the amount not to exceed $305,580 with funds available in Garage Fund 661.
I'll second.
Thank you, Commissioner Shaw. And thank you, Commissioner Anderson, for both taking on that name and the alliteration in the middle of it. So, all right, any discussion on this motion? Go ahead, Tim.
Just, this well may be the right decision to make, but I argued against it a year ago or whenever it was, and it's the same qualitative reasoning put forward when we really want, I want, what I'm looking for and looked for a year ago, is quantitative reasoning. Many items were referred to by the interim city manager, but qualitatively, not quantitatively. And so for me to make an informed decision, there's no information here that to base it on, and so I'll be voting no at this time.
Okay. Any other discussion from the commission? Any public comment on this item? Seeing none, I'll bring it back for vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Roll call, please. Commissioner Anderson?
Yes.
Commissioner Shadwell?
No.
Commissioner Shaw?
Yes.
Commissioner Werner?
No.
Mayor? Yes. Motion fails. All right, well, we'll see.
But it can be brought back if somebody changes.
Well, that's fine. Then let's go on to reports and correspondence. Do we have any reports from the commission?
I know, I know you don't want to hear anybody talk anymore, but.
I have a report, just don't worry about it.
Brownfield Authority report, the day before the meeting last week. We received an updated agenda, which included a request from Ann Jameson to use Brownfield funds up to $250,000 to demo the 1948 dry cleaner facility and on West Front and pay, well, it's actually kind of State Street there, and pay for an investigation by Otwell Moby to delineate the extent of the contamination. That's all they're going to do is investigate. The original million-dollar Eagle grant has been amended for use on another project as long as it's used between six and 12 months from now. And the Eagle Cadillac district will supposedly use district funds to pay for the cleanup, although that's not 100% sure if they can do that or afford to do that. This request was approved.
Any other reports? Mitch?
From the planning commission, we, our study session tomorrow has been canceled, but myself, Commissioner Deteria, and multiple members of the planning department staff will be attending the Michigan Planning Association Conference in Kalamazoo later this week.
Great.
So hopefully we'll learn a lot of good things to bring back to city planning.
Right. Okay. I just wanted to give two quick things. One kind of falls under, this kind of doesn't. I was in Marquette this weekend for the Fresh Coast Festival, which I frequently go to, and if anybody saw the ticker, will be coming and being focused around our Boardman Luke Lake and Nobo districts, which is very exciting. Jessica Hanley is their mayor, and I got to sit down and meet with her. We had coffee, and it was a great experience to talk about someone in a similar community with very different issues, but some very much the same. I also wanted to share that it was, it's a vote we already had at the DDA meeting on Friday morning to actually keep, continue, or to continue moving forward with some of the remaining TIF money to actually start the, take more steps further on the Boardman Restoration Project that's been outlined for a couple of years now. I think it's very significant that we note that because while we have done some cleanup along the Boardman, traditionally, the habitants of Traverse City have done nothing good for the Boardman, and this is the first good vote that I think we've had, and putting funds to where we need it for some restoration. And hopefully, we can see that continue to move forward, and we can be better stewards than we've been in the past because we have not been good stewards. So that is my final. Without any final comment from our staff, seeing none, thank you all for hanging in there, but we didn't do too bad for how heavy it was, 10:20. Oh, sorry, I forgot about general public comment. Oh, sorry. And not to dismiss it, so please come up if you have general comment about anything under the sun.
Your time's showing.
I just need three minutes.
Should I, should I get started?
Yeah, yes, please, sorry.
Great. So first of all, my name is Connor Miller, resident at 890 Boone Street, Traverse City. I am a Garfield Township resident, and I'm also employed at Aspire North Realtors, excuse me, located at 852 South Garfield Avenue in the city of Traverse City. So it's been a while since I've been to or in front of the City of Traverse City Commission, and I wanted to just take some time this evening to provide an update on what our association has been up to regarding a priority issue, housing in the city of Traverse City. So as well, as well as to make a request for your support for an impending study on how to bring more housing to the city of Traverse City. So next week, our association will be hosting the Counselors of Real Estate, CRE for short, Consulting Core, in the city of Traverse City from Monday, October 27th to Thursday, October 30th. The CRE Consulting Core will be providing analysis and actionable recommendations to increase housing options in this, in Traverse City based on the housing needs for the city of Traverse City by 2027. This was determined in the Housing North 2023 Housing Needs Assessment. The Consulting Core will be focusing on three areas in Traverse City that appear to have the greatest opportunity to support housing. These areas are the city of Traverse City's downtown core, Kids Creek Neighborhood with a primary focus on the village at Grand Traverse Commons, and the Traverse Heights Neighborhood. On Thursday, October 30th, at Aspire North Realtors' office at 2:00 PM, an initial presentation of their findings will be provided, which all of you commissioners are welcome to attend. And then 45 to 60 days following that presentation, a written report detailing the Consultant Core findings, conclusions, and recommendations will be provided. So I, first of all, I wanted to, well, not first of all at this point, wanted to thank Mayor Amy Shamro and Commissioner Tim Warner, who already participated in a preliminary visit by the lead consultant conducted on July 15th and 16th, and to get, to help him get a lay of the land of the housing needs and housing development environment in the city of Traverse City. So thanks to the National Association of Realtors, all costs for the CRE Consulting Core team are covered, and all client responsibilities are being provided by Aspire North Realtors. However, procedurally, CRE Consulting Core requests that the city of Traverse City sign onto this agreement to signify your interest and engagement in this process, as well as interest in the written report that will result from this process. I request the support of the appropriate city commissioner or city staff representative to sign onto this agreement with appropriate review and due diligence, of course. I have brought copies of that agreement for anyone's review, and I thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you.
Of course.
Any other public comment at this time? I apologize for that, Connor, after you waited for so long and you were the last public comment, but we are adjourning at 10:23, so you did great and kept it under the wire, and thank you, everyone, for hanging in there tonight. Have a great rest of your week.
Lions win.
Yeah, they did. Hey, I was a.